Fifteen seconds, please. Ten seconds. Five, four, three, two, one, you're up.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks, for joining us tonight. We have a smaller group here this evening. It is vacation week, but we do have a regular agenda that we hope to get through this evening. I just have a, I have a couple of announcements and then I'll see if anybody else does. The first one is, as you can tell, we've had a considerable amount of snow the last, last three weeks, and I just want to encourage everybody to drive slowly as they go down the streets of Long Meadow as people try pulling out of their driveways don't always have the, the best vision of cars coming down their streets. There's not much we can do about the piles at the end of the driveways. I do want to commend the DPW. They've done a great job. I know they continue to work on a daily basis cleaning up intersections and other areas. My understanding is our winter is not over based on the forecast, so we're likely to have a little bit more of this, so I do ask folks to take caution when they drive down the streets in town, go a little bit more slowly. Additionally, please do not dispose of snow by throwing it in the streets. Complaints are being responded to by issuing citations. There is a bylaw against placing snow or putting snow in the street, whether it's by a resident or by a contractor, so please, once we clear the streets, please try to keep them clear. Additionally, we ask everybody to just check in your neighborhood for the fire hydrant that may be in your neighbor, on your tree belt or on your neighbor's tree belt, and make sure the fire hydrants are cleared. It's to your interest to have the fire hydrants close to your house cleared, so please do so. If you're unable to clear them and they're not cleared, please report them to the town and we'll see to it that they do get cleared, but probably not by us. Finally, I have a selected announcement. This is for all the number of people in town who are volunteers and town boards and committees. Clearly, we appreciate the work that they do. Our state has a requirement that biannually, everybody who's on a volunteer elected or appointed board, complete a conflict of interest certification and testing. That includes us on the select board. All employees must also do that, so it's just as a reminder to anybody who is out there who may be listening to this, who is a volunteer for appointed or board, please complete your, and they did get emails about it, please complete your required conflict of interest testing and certifications, submit that to the town clerk. Does any, Alex, do you have any announcements that you want to see? Steven?
Thanks, Mark. Thank you for covering the stuff on the snow. Appreciate it. Obviously, sidewalks and, sidewalks and fire hydrants, keeping those clear are two high priorities. There was some feedback last week about the Blackboard Connect system in terms of getting our notices about garbage collection. Typically, similar to the schools when they cancel school, we only send out a notification when something has changed, and that's to avoid confusion. And so if garbage, if you don't hear that trash collection or any other municipal service is being rescheduled or moved, then I encourage residents to stick to the original schedule. Now, there are some folks in town who had an issue yesterday that we became aware of really this morning. It was a mechanical failure on Republic Services' end, and they were not able to finish the Monday route. I believe they finished it this morning, along with the Tuesday route. So I just wanted, we did, like I said, we got some feedback on, you know, two weeks in a row, garbage collection had been delayed a day, and those decisions are made by the Republic Services, not by the DPW, so they notify us when they're not going to send their trucks out. And then the third week, they let us know that they were going to go ahead and do the trash collection, so we did not send out an announcement. But I just wanted, you know, if you don't hear from us, then it's status quo.
Great. Maybe we'll get to that in a, kind of follow-up in a second on the trash pickup, but it's, again, it was a Republic decision whether or not we go and they clicked. I assume there's no resident comments since we have no residents here, so I'm just going to ask if there are any select board comments. Alex or Marie?
I was just going to say, I'm a follow-up on that. I want to thank you for having it on the website, because I wasn't sure. I went to the website and it said it's going to be the same schedule, so that really was nice and it was on the top. I thought this might be a good time to point out the letter I put in correspondence in regards to a resident called me that they're having trouble with other people putting snow on their property from other driveways, and it's making it more and more difficult to move out. And other towns do have snow disposal. It's prohibited on streets, but being placed on other property, and it's something that they would like us to consider, so I put it in correspondence, and I'll probably ask for it to be put on the agenda, but I just wanted to point that out for everyone to look at and consider, because I think it is worth us speaking. Usually, it's not going to be this bad, but we don't know if we're going to have harsher and harsher winters, and if it's on the books, it will less protect people from having huge amounts of snow placed on their property. So I'll talk to Richard about it going on a future agenda.
Great.
What do you mean by placing snow?
In other, what I'm understanding is when there, someone else's driveway is being shoveled, it's being pushed onto the person's property across the street, and it makes it difficult for them to pull out of their driveway because they now have a six-foot...
I had an issue, and I just spoke to the plow operator who's doing the driveway across the street from me, that, you know, they backed into that driveway and plowed it essentially into my, bottom of my driveway.
I think that, I mean, it's done all over the place, but I think there are areas of bylaw against that, and...
No, there isn't on this, because it was looked into, and we used to have one, and my understanding is this resident looked into it and said the police informed, and we don't have that. I don't know how you have it and don't have it, but I thought it should be worth us looking into, so if we do put it on this spring town meeting, we probably will want to talk about. But I just wanted, this is a sample from another town, and then we can do more research on it before it gets on the agenda.
Certainly worth looking into. I mean, this is particularly, I mean, we've had worse winters even in recent history, but this has been a bad winter, and I think we certainly do need to take care of those things. Thanks. We're going to move right in then into the town managers' reports. Steven, and you're up.
In my memo, there's a, there's some information about the K-9 grant that we'll get to later. And then the other quick note in the paper, in the packet, was about the budget capital planning process, which is going along well. We have, capital plan has been submitted and should be forthcoming from the capital planning committee soon. And we heard, we received the school's budget, and we've incorporated their recommended budget into our kind of master spreadsheet, and right now, as we stand, we will be presenting a balanced budget to the select board that includes compliance with some of the policies that the select board has adopted, especially with regards to OPEB and capital improvements, as well as handling the school's requests and maintaining town services. So we're, it was, it was a bit of a struggle this year, but we're pleased that we'll be able to present that and look forward to discussing that later. I did want to announce, we've talked in the past about the trash contract, speaking of our haulers, and the hauling contract currently is, we've solicited a few proposals, and we should be receiving those in the near future. We'll be evaluating the contract and who will be our, starting July 1st, who will be our next hauling vendor. Similarly, the feasibility study and preliminary design for the DPW facility is going through the state mandated procurement process, and I believe bids will be received on that February 26th, I think. And then one last thing, for people who have driven by the high school, I don't know if they've noticed, I certainly have noticed, but there, there are these metal louvers that are above the windows on the south and west side of the school, and the intent of them is to, there are, above them inside are these transom windows, and they're supposed to reflect light into the classrooms to create additional natural light and reduce the need for electricity. Well, they, turns out they also hold snow pretty well, and so a few of them have bent. We've got a couple of cracked windows. Unfortunately, with the way they were designed and constructed, it's, really the only viable way to clean them off is by getting essentially a lift, like a man lift, and going up along the side of the building, getting them. Now, a pathway along that side of the building wasn't built in as a part of the design, and so we have to essentially snow blow the grass through the snow we have to create a path. So it's, it's really an unfortunate circumstance, but you can, I think there's certain places you can see from the road that they're bent, but we're aware of it, and we're going to try and address it in the best way we can. Fortunately, the windows and the louvers were manufactured by the same company.
They were installed by the same company?
Installed by the window company, and they have a five-year warranty, so that's, as we sit here today, it's no additional cost to the town. But I just, if people see, drive by and see them bending, we are aware of it and we are addressing it.
Thank you. Marie?
This is time for questions on town manager's report?
I suspect so. Go ahead.
Okay. Just a few quick ones. On the blin lighting on the tennis courts, are they going to be hooded so they're directed? That's part of, because I know they just said special design, and I just hope they'll consider that.
The, the lighting that is in there now, that will go in, we had a, I had a conversation some months ago with the Merce, I think it's Musco Lighting, and they are basically sole source provider of stadium lights in the country. And right now, effective LED lighting for stadium lighting does not, doesn't really exist in a, in a way that was accessible to us. And, but the lighting that we're going to get is going to be 40% more efficient than the lighting that's there today. And they have, I don't know if they have hoods on them or what they have, but they have special designs that really direct the light in the most effective way. So it's, you know, the, stadium lighting has come a long way in the last 20 or 30 years, I've learned.
Because the new, over the new, what I see at Blueberry Hill, and I know the other schools, they now have more of the directed light. It really has made a difference in how it affects the neighborhood. Second question, Long Meadow Street paving preservation project, is that a current one or a new tip project you're putting in the, for submission?
Oh, from the DPW, that is, I think, a new one to be on the tip, yeah.
Okay, because I hadn't heard about it before. That was great. And the community house stage project, is that funded, or is that just a new project that we're starting to design?
Is it funded?
Yes, funded, funded.
Oh, it was funded, the stage project, okay. And thumbs up on the personnel policy manual review. That's great. I didn't know we were doing that.
Yeah, we have a draft. We were working with Sullivan, Hayes, and Quinn, our legal counsel, our labor counsel, on revising and updating the personnel manual. The personnel manual that's in effect now is a cover that is like a dot matrix printer graphic, which you can judge, that book is judgeable by its cover. And so many things are out of date, even out of date with some changes in the law. And so this is something that our HR department has been working on for a while, and fortunately, our attorneys are able to help us with this, and so we're pretty close to getting that.
That's a huge, I'm thrilled. That's really exciting. My last question is the neighborhood watch. It wasn't reported in the police department how we're doing, and it's funny, I know you probably don't have an answer, but if we can see how that project's going along from December. And I just want to say, the reports are fabulous. Thank you. Once you really work your way through it, there's more material from DPW than I understand or can get through, but I really appreciate them. Thank you.
Alex, do you have any questions? I have, I have a couple, Steven. One is that, we're just kind of follow-up on Marie's, though, in terms of the bling tennis courts. Can you just go over again, the, what we're going to, now, you used to pay for this, because we did have had a couple of supplemental allocations, and the bid came in just a tad over those?
Or initially, when we, when it was funded in the spring, at the annual town meeting in 2013. I'm sorry, 2014. Got fiscal years confused.
So we have $775,000 approved?
No, we have almost $900,000. I think we have $875,000 or...
Oh, right, right, 875. I didn't add correctly.
Yeah, we have 875 appropriated.
And the bid is 795.
And the bid is 795, so we have, we have sufficient funds for the project.
Right, okay, right. That was my, yeah, you're right. Okay. I apologize. The, couple of requests. One is that, a couple of charts we have which are really good, the trash chart, which is, we get a, we get a chart for the folks at home that show monthly poundage of trash that we've dumped, glass that we've recycled, and cardboard that we've recycled. I was just wondering if the right-hand column could end up being a total year-to-date instead of just whatever, kind of a random thing, so that, because although you can compare month to month, having a total year-to-date would be great. I'll send it to you, because I, I totaled it up just to see where we're doing, and we're actually running about where we were last year, a little bit behind, I think, on, on recycling. And if we could do the same thing with the water usage, that was a sadder story, that the water use year-to-date is substantially below prior years and below our tracking or our budget. We lost it all in July, August, September, and it's unlikely we're going to make up that additional usage, and so I think we need to look at that in terms of revenue, for total revenue. Now, clearly, the water we don't use, we don't pay the city of Springfield for, but we still have our fixed costs that are built into the, the water rate that don't go away from that. And that's, this is a paid political ad for our future discussion about, about how we charge for water, which we'll get into a little bit later this, this evening. But just having those, and I'll be glad to share them with you, Steven, or Mike, just we have that. Though, the other thing I was, I was just wondering about, because I, some of the things I read in the, in the newspaper and our earlier discussions this evening about plowing, is it possible for us to get a, a year-to-date cost of plowing by, at our next meeting? And what I'm looking for is, is overtime we know about, and salt costs that have gone beyond...
Before this weekend, it was like $235,000.
Above budget?
$235 total, so about $135 above budget, I believe it was.
Okay. And the reason I asked for that is because I think that, no, because I, you know, there's a possibility that the state may have supplemental funds made available for towns for plowing, and I think we need to kind of be ready to go out for supplemental funds. Now, they may end up only Essex County or something like that, because that's where the, for Suffolk County, because that's where the snow is, but to have that maintained up to date may be helpful to us to be able to, if that could...
Our payroll, our biweekly payroll records at crew units reflect, I mean, they, they track it in real time in terms of, yeah, overtime and guys on the crew or water department who are plowing, and, you know, time, time and their payroll records show, so we have a pretty accurate count. Last year, as you recall, when we had the brutal freeze thaws, and we had all the potholes, the state did, we got, I think, $79,000 or something like that to help fix potholes in town. So it's, there is a precedent for kind of a...
This is a state that, by the way, has no money, but who's screaming the poverty. But, but yeah, that, the other thing is, you know, I guess payroll is somewhat straightforward, but I don't know if we'd end up even able to buy more salt or had to, or maintenance on vehicles, or any of that kind of stuff. I think it'd be helpful for us, just to kind of track that. And maybe if you can, Mike, report that in your next couple of monthly, hopefully the next monthly report will be the last one you reported on, but that way it'll get through to Steven and get, get through to us, and we'll be good with that. Thank you. I think, I think that, oh, the last thing I just wanted to talk about was the K-9 grant, and I guess I'm looking for a little bit more detail in that. We had a discussion back in...
That's on the...
It's on the agenda later.
Oh, is it? Okay, so why don't we hold off taking care of that then? All right. And if there are no other questions about town manager's report, let's just go into old business, which is our traffic calming policy. So I'd like Marie or Alex, one of the two of you, since you're both on that operations subcommittee that proposed this traffic calming policy, if you would, one of the two of you would just take it over.
Well, I guess what I'd do, first of all, is make a motion that we adopt the traffic calming policy as part of our packet for approval.
Second.
Okay, great.
I think you, this is just a further version from what we gave last, I think it was in January, and we took your comments and Richard's comments and made a few changes in the policy reflecting what some of your concerns were. So it's a, if the neighborhoods are concerned about the volume of traffic going through their neighborhoods, there's now a process, if we adopt this policy, on sending a letter to the traffic committee, and then there's a process for the traffic committee to make recommendations for this board, and then a follow-up evaluations once the various traffic calming measures are put in place. And I think it, it covers everything. There might be a few bumps in the road that we want to make some changes, but at this point, I think, ha ha, yes, I think at this point, it would be nice to just get it in place, and then we could work out some of the kinks. But Alex worked very hard. He worked, pulled many towns together and analyzed what other towns were doing before he came up with the original traffic calming policy. And I know that was a lot of work, and there's different ways to go. I think he was very wise in his selection on what he chose as a process and procedure for this town.
And just to sort of elaborate on that, when I looked at other cities and towns' traffic calming policies, there was a certain, some towns had a certain rigidity about it, that, you know, you can't consider this until you consider that. If you get to this point, the next step must be that. What I did was to sort of make this, have a lot of play in the joints, a lot of discretion at each stage. Nothing is sort of automatic. I think it really, you know, rests on the judgment of the people that are making the recommendations and the select board in adopting the traffic calming measures. So I, I think it gives a lot of flexibility in going forward and establishes a process, and, you know, and then, you know, there's criteria that we can take into account.
I have a few questions as I read through it, maybe, I don't know, I'll just go through and one of the two of you can answer it. You know, if we just start kind of near the top, it says, "The form should be directed to the town manager or the director of public works," and I'm just wondering why we've got the director of public works. If it's a safety, maybe it ought to be the police. I think the town manager may be sufficient. Clearly, it says "or," so it's not a big deal to me, so...
Oh, I thought we got rid of the "or."
Oh, okay. I'll say, I just had the town manager to begin with, and then somebody had a suggestion about "or" and the director of public works.
I think it should be one or the other. I have no problem with it going to the town manager and then being pushed down.
All right, then maybe, maybe we could just do it then, town manager.
I think it's fine. I mean, either way, it ends up with the traffic committee, and...
Right.
But it should, should come through the town manager, so it gets processed and date stamped and everything else.
So I had, I crossed that out, so it didn't get to that final version, I'm sorry, because we had discussed that.
We might have had a miscommunication.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we can, we can remove that. That's fine.
Works for me. The next area, it says, "Traffic Committee," the next paragraph, it says, "Traffic Committee will review the application and determine the limits of the affected area and may request a petition." You know, I just, I'm questioning the "why" and "may request a petition." I just say, you know, what does a petition do in terms of...
He had a reason.
Well, so this actually softens somewhat other towns. Some towns, thou shalt have a petition if you're going to, and I think there is something sound behind it, because you're trying to gauge whether or not everybody's behind it. To take the Quintetuck Road example, I think it was very important for our deliberations that we knew that everybody wanted something done. If, on the other hand, it was one or two people, that, that would have been good to know. If it was half and half, that was something. And I guess the point is, again, there's the flexibility of requesting a petition. A petition could be submitted, and, but then again, I also thought that under certain circumstances, getting a petition might be difficult, because let's say we're dealing with something that has a, like a big effect, like Converse Street. Like, what exactly would be the affected area, and how could you get all the names of the petition? So again, it just, it gives us some flexibility.
Fine. That explanation's fine, Alex. I, you know, like I said, I, I guess the other area that was a little concerned about is that says, "To verify there's widespread concern," you just answered the question, "How do you know what widespread concern?" So you kind of answered that, that it's, it's, it's nebulous enough to be helpful when you want it, and not constraining when you don't want it to be. Okay, that's fine. Down, down a couple of sentences, it says the same thing, that said, identified by the application that it represents a widespread concern, right? And I don't know, I guess my only comment there was, do we want to retain the word concern, or do we want to say it's a safety, safety issue? Because it's one thing to respond to concerns, it's another thing to respond to safety issues. There's a lot of concerns that aren't safety issues, but there aren't too many safety issues that aren't concerns. And I'm just questioning maybe, since we use concerns above, we might want to put in safety issue there.
I don't know. To me, again, we're trying to, you know, have something that's flexible and wide open. I mean, obviously, if there are unmeritorious applications, that can be figured out during the policy. I don't think I'd want to have a policy that, at the outset, simply didn't permit certain applications to be made.
Can I make a comment about that?
Sure.
I think, my concern with adding the language in, is that safety is not a kind of subjective thing in traffic analysis. Safety is measured generally in crash statistics. And so people may, people may have a perceived safety issue in that they're on the sidewalk and cars seem to be going by fast, but that doesn't necessarily by itself constitute a safety issue. And I think a concern can, certainly through our analysis, we, we will find out, is this a safety issue, or a volume issue, or a speed issue, or something like that, but I just would rather let it get, I agree with Alex, let it get to that first level of analysis and let, and let the traffic committee figure that out.
Okay. Just a editing issue. There's a sentence in the next paragraph that says, "If the traffic committee or the select board decides the traffic calming application warrants further studies," somehow there's a period there that doesn't belong there.
Where's that?
I think it says, comma.
No, no.
No, just before the word "town staff."
Yeah, there's a comma.
Oh, okay. Came through, all right, that's fine. That's the traffic.
I didn't forget the right...
No, it's under data collection evaluation, that's fine.
Oh, you know what? It's because the T's capitalized. It happens automatically to me sometimes.
Oh, because the T in town is capitalized.
So I'll circle that. That's what it looks like.
Anyway, just, just check it, that's all.
I'll fix the T.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
So I see the two changes. Anything else?
Yeah, and down in the last, where it says "stage one, traffic calming," I guess I have, it's a question. The first sentence says, "Select board shall presumptively employ stage one traffic calming measures prior to implementing stage two traffic calming measures." And I guess my question is, can we, or what do we think about delegating to the traffic committee the implementation of stage one traffic calming measures, and only the select board picking up stage two issues? And, and then I went back and looked at what stage one and stage two are, and we'd have to readjust what some of, some of those are, but I'm trying to, I would like to see that we have a policy that not everything has to come to the select board, that we can delegate some of these earlier and lesser issues.
Well, and I think the, at the bottom of that paragraph, as you just noted, sort of denotes which require select board approval, which don't.
Yeah, it says "the select board in its sole discretion," right.
Right, and so...
Oh, I thought we, we pulled that out.
Where?
The select board in sole discretion. That went back in.
No, that, no, the edits, where...
It says, "The select board in its sole discretion will determine whether stage one or stage two measures are appropriate."
Well, if we cross that out and we say "select board and traffic committee," is that what you're trying to say? Because I thought we had crossed this out.
Well, really, the point here is not so much, I understand your point, but it's really... really just to emphasize the existence of discretion, and that people can't say, "Well, you have to do something," that it's really communicating the level of judgment that's involved.
Right, I, it was just my thought process of, you know, if you had stage one, stage two, and stage three, you know, you give, you know, the town manager solely stage one, and the traffic committee stage one and two, and the select board gets involved, you know, that kind of thing. So it's a, an escalating response with getting more involvement by more people.
Well, you know what we could do? I mean, again, we could keep drafting this for a while.
Right.
We could say, "The select board or the town, or the traffic committee..."
Yeah.
"...as appropriate will determine whether it's stage one or stage two."
Fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, so we have to cross out the select board in sole discretion?
Yeah, just, yeah.
So that will be crossed out, okay?
So it says, "The select..." Okay, so you got it?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thanks.
Is that, anything else?
No, I just, well, yeah, just a couple of questions. Like, the list of stage one, it has temporary street blockages with a, and I was just wondering if that ought to be something beyond a stage one? That was, again, part of my...
Well, the idea is that it's cheap and easy to include, and that does meet that criteria. Now, again, there's nothing that says that we should do temporary street blockage. I mean, there's nothing that, nobody can invoke this policy to say that you have to do that.
Right.
And again, using the Quintetuck Road example, you know, that's something that we looked at and was not immediately implemented.
Okay. You know, like I said, I, when I went through this the first time, I thought we were going to have a successive kind of process, and because the response would be successively more permanent, or more difficult, or more expensive, you know, that's why I wasn't convinced.
And like I said, you know, some places, you know, there's a real rigidity to that, you know? And in fact, you know, like I think one town said, "Once you implement it, it has to see an effect for a certain amount of time, and nobody can stop it." I, to me, that didn't make any sense, you know, for our town. I think we can be flexible if we have a Quintetuck Road example, you know, in the future, is to, maybe temporary street blockage is necessary, and maybe that's the first thing to do, but it is, maybe, it's not presumptively the first thing you do.
I think, you know, each situation is different, and I think when you, when you do have like a, if, if A then B, it somewhat takes the ability to kind of handle each situation uniquely out of your hands. So I think I support the, in stage one, stage two is, because I think it's right, I think the, the division is sensible, where you have things that can be done cheaply and quickly, mostly by in-house personnel, and then you have stage two, which will likely require an appropriation from town meeting, because of, because it's somewhat significant reconstruction. And so I think, I think those are two progressive steps, but I mean, you know, on one intersection, you know, education awareness may not be the second step or first step, it may be the fifth step. You know, you just, you just don't know, each situation's different, so you want to be able, you want to be able to have the opportunity to judge each traffic situation on its own. The only other comment I'd make is, we have limited ability to change speed limits at the local level. That's one thing I did learn through this process from the police department, and I don't know if that should be clarified, you know, pursue, pursue changes in speed limits? We'd have to go to the state, I believe, to do that.
On local roads, it's within our discretion. I mean, that, and I say this because we got advice from Joel Bard.
Okay, that's different than what I heard from, I mean, I don't know, our engineers here, I don't know if he wants to...
Will you approve from Mass DOT and the R and B?
But that's not for, for skate roads.
Is it?
Not every side street. I mean, for example, I know Belclaire was...
That's what you told me.
I mean, it was reduced, you know, by action of the select board, so, and that's what Joel Bard said, so...
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other changes?
Well, no, just some discussion I want on this. The last, next to last paragraph, which says, "Follow-up evaluation," I think it's the next to last, or maybe it's not even there, but, but it says, "After stage, stage two measures have been placed for a reasonable period of time," should we qualify that by saying, and I just, not to exceed like six months, just so we know what reasonable is, it also gives us a kind of a bring-up file to, so we look at it after six months, you know, additional data. It says, "Additional data may be collected," but it seems to me that if, I would think that it should be collected, otherwise, how are we going to determine effectiveness without data?
Okay, did we say a review should occur in six months by...
No, it says, "A reasonable period of time."
Oh, so there's seconds.
And I thought, theoretically, we would say, you know, not to exceed six months, being a reasonable period of time. That way, we force the review.
Again, it sort of goes to, you know, how much rigidity you want to, you know?
I'm just trying to force the review, Alex, as opposed to...
Sure, sure.
Making it rigid. And, but I do think that the review ought to be more than anecdotal, and therefore, I think data ought to be collected. Now, it doesn't say what kind of data, and it doesn't say that it has to be expensive traffic study kind of data, but...
But I guess, I guess my thought, though, is, you know, you know, policy's only really as good as the people implementing it, you know? But to me, it's common sense that the town manager and the select board, we'd be having ongoing conversation about it, and, you know, we can determine when a reasonable period of time is, and what kind of data ought to be submitted.
Well, do you want to say a review should occur in six months by the town traffic committee?
It says that, or you shall, it should occur in six, it's already in there.
Oh, it is in there.
That's in there.
Okay, so that does kick in the, the six months...
Fine.
It will be looked at.
All right, so it does say, "A review shall occur," okay.
I just had one other comment in the sentence after that. Unless installed measures are deemed to be a hazard, again, I think there's some level of, you know, it's not entirely subjective what is considered a hazard, so I would recommend saying, "Deemed to be hazardous or ineffective."
Okay. Hazardous or ineffective?
Yeah.
How do you guys feel about that?
Right, that's fine.
It may not work, but it doesn't necessarily constitute a hazard.
Right. But if they're ineffective, why leave them, right?
Right.
That's fine. The other thing to go with that is, the last paragraph, or the last sentence there says, "These may be discontinued, the select board may discontinue the measures before three years have elapsed if there is a good cause to do so." Or, yeah, a good cause to do so. And I just, I just say, because of the definition, or lack of definition of good cause to do so, the select board may discontinue the measures before three years have elapsed, period.
Well, I don't think, I think good cause makes, so you, yeah, there's no harm in it.
I mean, again, the idea is, again, it sort of gets into the ineffective part, you know, so, again, you know, you're not locked into it, is the point.
All right, so let me go through the changes and see how people feel about it. What I marked down is that everyone agreed to reporting, well, it was discussed, reporting the problem, town manager, we will cross out the line, or the director of public works.
Okay.
The next comment was on the DAP collection, town staff should have a small t. And that's, "If the traffic committee or select board decide the traffic calming application warrants further study, comma, town should be a small t."
Yeah.
The next comment was, "Under traffic calming, the select board or traffic committee, as appropriate, shall employ," crossing out presumptively. Is that what was discussed?
Uh, so... Oh, I thought this, it says, "Will determine," I thought we were keeping that language, "will determine whether stage one or stage two are appropriate."
Okay. "The select board or traffic committee, as appropriate, shall determine..."
Sure, or "will determine."
"Will determine."
I think we can just keep the language.
And keep the rest.
Right.
Okay. Then, the next one is, "The select board, in its sole discretion, will determine whether stage one or stage two measures are appropriate," will be crossed out. Is that agreed to?
Say that again, Marie, where's that?
On the same traffic calming, I thought we said, "To reflect the changes in line one, we would cross out the second to the last sentence, which says, 'The select board, in its sole discretion, will determine whether stage one or stage two measures are appropriate.'"
I thought we'd have...
No, I didn't...
I thought that's what we were just...
That's the edit we just made.
The edit was on the first line, "The select board or traffic committee, as appropriate, will determine to employ stage one traffic calming measures prior to implementing stage two." That was the first...
Right, so if you have that, you can't say, "The select board in its sole discretion will determine it."
Okay.
You can't have them both.
All right, well, then we can, again, put, you know, on that sense, "The select board or the traffic committee, as appropriate."
Okay, that's fine. As appropriate, so it's reflecting the first line.
Yep.
All right, and then the last change was, "Under follow-up evaluation, unless the installed measures are deemed to be a hazard, to be hazardous or ineffective, once they are installed." So the, instead of a hazard, would, to be hazardous or ineffective. Is that correct?
That's what I recommended.
Yeah, is that agreeable?
Sure.
Okay, so, you're going to put a motion to approve the...
The motion's on the, yeah, well, we can do this fairly informally. Why don't we, yeah, why don't we just ask, ask Alex to amend your motion to...
I'll amend my motion to include the changes we just discussed.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so, okay, any other discussions now on this? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Great.
And do you want me to send in, do you have those corrections, or should I make a corrected version in?
Why don't you send the corrected version? I can put them on my version, but why don't you do that?
Are you doing that for me?
I'll do that, and I'll send it to you to make sure I haven't made any mistakes before we get it out.
Yeah, if you want to send it to me, I'll just check it for some lines.
Okay.
All right, let me just save this.
I need to hurry a second.
Okay, great. All right, any other issues with that?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, the next point of business we have is ambulance rates. We have in our packet a memo from our fire chief, Madison, recommending that we modify our ambulance rates to reflect changes allowed under Medicare payments for ambulance rates. So I'd welcome a motion to adopt these, if somebody sees fit to do that.
I move to adopt the new rates for the ambulance service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. What we're seeing is, I'm assuming that we're not hitting the top rate payment on all of the insurances, because I know insurance, different insurances pay back different amounts. And we're at a correct rating for all of those insurances? Does he look and see how Blue Cross Blue Shield, how the PPOs and everyone are paying out? We're not missing out on our, are those reviewed by you before?
I, mostly reviewed by the fire chief, but, I mean, we do run it like a business.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we don't, we pursue reimburse, I don't know what...
No, but I think Marie's question is, if, if the rate we're proposing is 657.26 for emergency rate, you know, and there's insurance companies that will reimburse $750, should our rate be 750, we will collect 657.26 from Medicare, but those private insurances might pay us the 750. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you. My wordsmith.
So, we know.
But these are just the Medicare rates, or so, we're just saying the Medicare rates because that's, Medicare changes its rates annually.
Right.
I think the private insurance rates are different.
Well, no, I think what he, what I thought this said is that whenever Medicare goes up 2%, we're just, we'd like to kick it up 2%. I'm just wondering, are our rates appropriate to all the private insurances? Are we...
So the question is, are the rates we're approving ambulance rates, or are they Medicare ambulance rates? Do we have...
Medicare ambulance rates.
So we have a different rate, yeah, I don't understand.
That's not how I read this.
So I guess I'm just asking you to go check and make sure that if we're charging $657, are all the private insurances paying us 675, 657? Because they said, "Oh, great, we would have paid you 750, you asked for it," so...
I can certainly have the fire chief, he was not available to be here this evening.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
I can certainly, if you want to send me the specific question, I can have him follow up, but this, the report here and the vote that we're asking for here is, I think, kind of a pro forma thing that the board has done in the past, is why.
Right, but I'm just calling out...
I don't, I don't know a lot about it, because it's, it's complex, and someone said, somebody commented to me that fire departments are becoming ambulance companies that respond to fire calls with the way, the complexity of the billing, the business type of it is. But certainly, I can have him provide any information you guys want.
Or just to review the contracts, because I know that there's a variety out there. I'm sure he's doing it, just asking, and I'm still going to support the increase.
I might be able to answer the question, because I have the memo from last year this time, from the fire chief, which was somewhat more extensive than the current one, and it says, "The new rate structure has been working as intended, and our collections are on target, but I'm making following recommendations to you and the select board, that the select board increase our current ambulance rates by 1.1%, the same adjustment Medicare is allowing for increases this year." So last year, when he asked for an overall rate increase, it was to reflect the Medicare rates, and that was the basis for my presumption, that this year, that is the overall rate, and he's asking it to go up. And so the question is, how many people, or how many private payers would pay more than that, that we're missing out on, and, I don't know, that we have a way to know that, but this was interesting, it's January 29, 2014, so, and that memo was pretty clear that, that several years ago, the select board adopted an ambulance rate policy of Medicare, Medicare rates plus 30%. The policy worked well to keep annual increases to our ambulance rates while maintaining affordability. In March 2013, the select board changed the ambulance rates based on my recommendation to a bundled rate structure. The intent of the new rate structure was to position our service for certain provisions of the Affordable Care Act. The new rate structure has been working as intended, and our collections are on target. However, the new rate structure no longer lends itself to an automatic adjustment of Medicare rates plus 30%. This is because only our new bundled rate structure is not modeled after Medicare rates and structures. So with this in mind, he was asking for an increase, and in fact, last year, he asked for a rate of 644.36. So that is the whole rate, not, that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Now, we've got a visitor in the audience, too, Mr. Pesterzak, I don't know if you've been paying attention here, or you hear what I'm talking about, but...
I just, I'm not 100% sure of the questions that you're reading, and I would prefer to err.
Fine. All I'm saying is, based on this memo from last year...
Right.
It seems that this was the overall rate last year, and what he's asking us for now is, you know, 2% increase, and it's interesting that...
I would make the same assumption.
644, 2% is $12 and change, and so, lo and behold, we go from 644 to 657, and so the answer, Marie, is this is a overall rate.
Right.
But he also answered last year that we apparently used to do what you do, and we no longer did that, so, or not what you, we used to do what you potentially suggested, and he changed that last year because of issues having to do with the Affordable Care Act.
Yeah, that's what...
My sense is that if we waited a week to adopt these, or a month to adopt these, Chief Madison would probably come in here and explain to us why you recommended what he did last year.
It has to be done by a certain day. I think there is some time sensitivity to it.
Especially since we did it last year in January. I would go ahead, I wouldn't wait to hear my answer. I'm just asking him in the future to keep an eye on whether the private rates are paying, but I think we should go ahead with the 2% increase.
Good. It's interesting, because last year, he said, between now and... It's interesting, because last year, he said, between now and next year, the finance director, town manager, and fire chief will research and develop a standard automatic rate increase process for ambulance rates to recommend to the select board.
And there it is.
2%.
All right, anyway, I think that answers that question, so... All right, so any other questions or concerns? Motion's been made and seconded. Call for vote, all those in favor of adopting these rates? Aye, any opposed? Vote passes three to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is separate water meters, and this is something I asked us to bring up, and I'm going to ask Mike Rabel and Pete Thurber, who's our water department manager, to come up and talk to us, just kind of as an overview for residents.
Thank you.
I would like to just comment that many years ago, we had a request by residents to be allowed to install a secondary, separate water meter for irrigation systems. At the time, there was a proposal by the DPW to, that would allow residents to do that at their cost to some degree, but would then have a system where the second water meter would be exempt from sewer charges, the irrigation water meter would be exempt from sewer charges. That was several years ago, and I thought it was worth taking another look at it. So we've asked the director of DPW or our water department to take another pass to see if there are any changes or updates, and so with that introduction, Mike, Pete, you're on.
The information I had, that I handed you, was updated from a few years ago when we last did this. Basically, most of the information is the same. The rates have changed because of price of, water meters have gone up. But basically, it was our recommendation at the time, and we're still continuing that we think we would support, for those that want it, the installation of an irrigation basically, and in the package, there is a, there's a sketch, basically, that it would show that the secondary meter would require some plumbing changes in the house. That would be the resident's responsibility to hire a plumber to come and do that so that the water that goes through the secondary meter is not, it's not a deductive meter, it's a separate meter, separate account for the house. A few years ago, it was my recommendation that you go back to the street so we have a separate, a separate shut-off, a curb box. As we discussed it, we think we could go with a one curb box that's out at the street and just in the house or, in the house, inside the foundation, you would put in a tee, branch off the supply, the supply line for the secondary meter, and that secondary meter would go outside to a bath flow preventer, which is required by code for irrigation system or for use of a pool or whatever else it would be outside. And the price of the meter and the transmitter, you can see under the secondary meter process, it'd be $315 for a 3/4 inch meter or $395 for a 1-inch meter. That would be at the homeowner's preference. There's application, actually, we call it application fee, but it's application, inspection, and installation. There's also, the individual would have to, through the building commissioner, have to get a plumbing permit, and again, that's for the plumber that's going to do the work inside the house. The DPW would come in, set the meter, record the information, because each individual meter has a discrete radio frequency, and that is how we would read the meter. It sounds relatively inexpensive or innocuous, I should say inexpensive. As far as the expense, you know, we could see where this is going to cost somebody $700 or $800. And that is, again, for the meter, for the insulation, paying for a plumber, and then that's, that's our guess about what it's going to cost for a plumber.
So it might have a three or four-year payback. It's not a one-year payback by any means.
It's not a one-year payback, and that's one thing that I want to bring to everybody's attention, because the maximum, because of the billing process that we have, right now you pay for water and sewer up to 222, 220 units. A unit of water is 100 cubic feet or 750 gallons, it's 748. So if you are, for the water you're using in your house, and the average, the mean, when we did the billing analysis previously, the average or the mean is 135 units. So you're going to pay for water and sewer for that 135 units, and the savings, say for that average homeowner in town, is for the sewer billing, because you're still going to pay for the water, so it's the sewer billing that would be avoided. So for the average homeowner that's, or property owner that's using 135 units, it's a difference of 85 units that would be the avoided cost of sewer. And at today's current rate, that would be $199.75. So, yeah, it's about a three and a half, four-year payback for the average individual in town.
You know, thank you, Michael. I don't, Pete, do you have anything you want to add?
Just, you know, Mike and I, we've talked about it a little bit, and, you know, like you said, these figures that we're looking at now were kind of figures that were done in the report back in 2007 when they were evaluating water and sewer rates. Earth Act actually did that.
So the number we're using, 135 units as an average, I mean, right now, that's, like I said, that's just...
That could change a little bit. I mean, it could be more, it could be less.
Okay.
You know, for some people, if you look at an average like that, it may turn around, and we've discussed if they're, they have an irrigation system and they don't use a lot of water, and most of their water usage is from an irrigation system, say a family of, you know, just two, then that overall, like you talk about that three-year, three and a half, four-year, well, that may turn into, I mean, it possibly could turn into a five or six-year, depending on their usage, you know, for that initial cost of the installation. So...
I looked at it the other way around, Pete. I think that if you have a family who doesn't use 135 units of sewage, you know, then, and they max to 220...
Mark's right. You got it backwards.
Yeah, and you max to 220, the payback could be shorter.
On the other hand, if you've got somebody who doesn't use that 135 units, the payback is going to be longer.
So rather than us debate it, I think what you, you know, and this is my argument to Alex and to Marie, is that to make this available to town residents, let them do their own analysis and decide whether or not they want to do it. We're not telling anybody they have to, you know, we're not, but, but we've had over the years enough people saying, I'd like to be able to do this. We now have the technology, that was part of, if you will, the potential when we put in, you know, remote meter reading, that it no longer costs us as, you know, a significant amount of money to read the extra meters and to, and to bill the extra meters. You know, one thing you don't have in here that I think people ought to be aware of is that there's likely to be a billing fee on the second meter that's something nominal that covers our postage or paperwork, but there may not be.
That's the next topic of discussion.
Okay, but the other issue is, to my mind, is that when we talk on an average of three and a half-year payback, that's today's sewer rates. But if you do it today and the sewer rates go up 10% or 15% a year, it pays back, you know, so again, it's a, it's an individual decision. It's like, do I put a solar panel on my house or anything else? But to make it available, I think is something that, since we have the ability to do that, I would like to see us do that. And I'm not proposing that we approve this tonight, clearly, but, but rather than we take this, carry it over, but I'd love to see this thing get approved so that, starting when the season gets right for irrigation, people who want to this spring, put that in, be able to do that. From the select board's perspective, one of the issues is, will we be able to appropriately predict and budget for sewer usage? Because we will now have a considerable amount of water being, or may have the potential for having considerable amount of water that is no longer being billed as sewage. And so instead of saying, you know, we know that the same amount of water that we bill for, for usage gets billed for, for sewage, we're going to have to make that, make that adjustment. So the sewer rates may go up a little bit as sewage, as water gets removed from the sewage stream, if you will, but I think it more properly reflects actual sewer usage. And so I don't have a problem personally with the sewer rate actually reflecting what it costs. And then, as I said, and when the sewer rate goes up, therefore, the people who were early adopters benefit, and it may then drive people who are not early adopters to then adopt this secondary meter system. I don't know.
And if people don't save their bills and don't know what their annual consumption is, they can call us and we can give them that information very quickly to help them decide the personal decision whether it's a good investment for them or not.
Now, go ahead, Steve.
Well, again, I'll say is that you made the comment about water consumption being low, but the fixed cost of our team that we have, materials, labor, equipment, that keep our water system going even though it is received from the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Similarly, we have fixed costs, and not only the fixed costs of keeping the system going, the capital costs of upgrading and maintaining and, you know, all that other stuff. And so I guess I, I agree with you that there are levels, there are principled levels on which this makes sense, but on the other hand, it's an individual decision that has spillover ramifications potentially for other rate payers.
Correct. I just, my response, Steve, would be that, but there is no home that's going to get out of paying sewer fees by doing this unless, of course, they have septic tanks, and they don't pay sewer fees now, but, and I don't think there's more than one or two houses in town like that.
They're disputed.
But, but, so the fact is that nobody's going to get away from paying sewer fees for their potable water system. And so, I mean, that's just kind of my justification. Sorry, Marie, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a couple of issues. I know we had discussed this a couple of years ago, and I guess my concerns are, what are the, what are, what's going to happen with DPW? What are going to be their responsibilities, the time on the town? And I think we started to look about the fee structure that had to go on top of us, like the approved backflow device will be tested annually. Well, what would be the charge of that? And so it started to push the prices up, and then we decided, oh, they just seem too high. And Richard came up with an alternate suggestion, which I don't know if we followed, and that is, once he says, we have all the data out there, we could pretty much statistically figure out how much the average house is, that has irrigation systems and things like that, would be able to do a decrease without investment in all of this equipment that we have to check, that we have to inspect, that we have to do. So he said it would be cheaper and easier and faster to actually just do a statistical analysis and then figure it out that way.
Yeah, and I don't agree. And the reason I don't agree is because in the summer months, one could argue that it's not just irrigation, but families are doing more loads of wash, taking more showers, and, you know, to say, and I think this was Richard's point, if I can kind of paraphrase what he's saying, was because we could do monthly usage analysis, we could see how much more people use in the summertime, but the problem is you don't know what people are using it for in the summertime. And, you know, I have this personal bias that, that much of the summertime increase, even by people who have irrigation, is not just from the irrigation. And the only way you really know that is by allowing people to put this in. I think that, you know, it's, you know, to me, it's an allowance that we ought to make. Clearly, we're not telling people they have to, you know, it's not like we're saying, if you have an irrigation system, you must do this. You know, some will choose to do it, some will choose not to do it.
One thing we didn't know a year ago, two years ago, that we can't just read the meters. We can't read the meters without going through and processing all the information, running a billing cycle, so we can't do it on a monthly basis, which is what we had hoped that we would be able to do. If we gather, if we go gather the information, collect all the data after a month, and then process it to see what it is, when we read it again later, that interim time period. So if we read it on July 1st and then read it on August 1st, when we go read it the end of the year, it's going to start from August 1st, not from July.
So it's not as easy.
It's going to...
Not as easy as we had hoped it was going to be.
The information that we collected back like 2007, 2008, we didn't have our new meter reading system. So we were reading six cycles, we were reading every month, so we got a little better picture back then when we were doing some of the, you're working with some of the figures. Now, because with the new reading system, we read everybody all at the same time, six months, and because of the time you split, the irrigation is split up, you know, on each part of that bill, you don't see it like we used to. I mean, we could get into that a little bit more to see if there is some sort of a program, like Mike was explaining, once we go out and with our reading system and we read, the only way to get that information is to put it into Munus and create a bill run. Once you create that bill run, the previous read, kind of, that's the new read, so our six-month reading is off.
So you're saying that Richard's approach of doing this statistically would be difficult to do because of our new read, or are you saying doing this system is going to be burdensome to DPW and won't be that easy to calculate?
It's going to be more difficult because of the laws of...
This, this recommendation.
If we were going to read on a monthly basis, and that's, that's what we were intending to do the first time around.
Okay.
We wanted to be able to, we wanted to have the information in-house for this discussion, and we can't do that, because if, when we read the meter, the next time we read it, that becomes a baseline for the subsequent reading.
But somebody who is really interested in doing this could use this summer to read their meter themselves every month.
Oh, surely.
And we'd be glad to show them how to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
The point is, Marie, I understand that there's issues with inspecting it and that kind of thing, but, you know, again, if somebody wants to, you know, I'm in it for the long haul, I think sewer rates are going up, I want to get my three-year payback or four-year payback, or I think it's a two-year payback, or whatever it is, you know, why should we not allow them to do it, would be my argument.
And you would be able to put together a fee schedule that would make sure that this didn't cost DPW more money to run this double program?
It's not going to cost us more money. The insulation, there's an upfront charge, the insulation, the inspection, but after that...
It's not, okay.
It's all computers.
Okay.
The extra cost would be the extra bill that would come out, because say, if you had it at your house, instead of us generating two bills a year, we would be generating four bills a year, one for your irrigation meter, two for your irrigation meter, and two for your household consumption. So that's the difference in cost.
Yeah.
And there may be future costs just for the meters themselves, like, say, 10 years down the road, you know, if they fail, it's, even though the residents are paying for that meter, just like in their new construction, we still have the responsibility of that meter. If it fails, you know, under warranty or whatever, then there would be that cost.
And you just make sure you, the fees would cover that?
Alex, do you have any questions?
Let me, yeah, a couple, but getting back to Richard's statistical analysis, would this be in lieu of installing these meters?
Yeah. In fact, he says you can pretty much see what other towns, what their consumption is, and you see our historical, their statistics there to be able to do an analysis and figure, well, this is what we should be cutting a percentage of these bills. And so you might not get as accurate as this, but then there wouldn't be the initial upfront cost. So this is like an initial, bringing this back to the board, but I think we would have to, probably have it in front of the waters commissioners, yeah.
Excuse me. Did you say do a statistical analysis to see what the difference in billing would be?
No, what he was saying was you could, yeah, and again, hearsay. This is a short conversation with Richard that he had said about a year ago, and, and that was, well, you know, we could pretty much know what the difference would be in the houses that have irrigation systems.
So the question is, Richard is, is my water usage difference between February and August because I have irrigation in August? And Richard takes, so statistically, you can see that, but, and my argument is, unless you get in that house, you don't know how many loads of wash they're doing, you don't know how many showers they're taking.
But what he was saying is there's 20, let's say, an example, there's 20%, so then you make a, you offer a 10% discount.
But the fact is, we can do it, we don't have to do it statistically, we can do it exactly by letting people put in a meter. So why don't we do it exactly? You know, why play statistics when you do it exactly?
My water bill at home, my billing system, my bill, I get one, one sewer bill a year. I get quarterly water bill readings. The town purchases a water company... The town purchases a water company information, and we wouldn't have to purchase it, it's ours, if you had quarterly billing. And what they, for my bill, they take the four quarters, they subtract the high quarter, take the average of the other three, it's substituted for the fourth quarter. And the computer does all the work, and it shows you what your actual consumption for the year is, and your revised billing is for, for water consumption. That's another means.
There's gotta be a dozen ways to do it.
We only, we only read twice a year, and if you wanted to go to four times a year, that's gonna double the cost of billing.
Let me get back to Alex, and go ahead.
So I guess, I mean, my comment is sort of at a, sort of more basic level. It's like we're incentivizing watering lawns. And, you know, irrigation, to me, just the name irrigate, I mean, as somebody who actually has irrigated crops, you know, to, to me, to think of, to use the word irrigation when you're talking about grass, is, is kind of funny, but, I mean, I, I just don't see this as consistent with national and state policy where we're trying to decrease lawn watering. We're trying to, uh, save water, that's certainly where the state's going to go. I, I've talked about this for years. I think there's gonna be a day when people in Boston, the, the, tell us that we have to hit a certain level. We are currently, I think, the third or fourth highest water, per capita water user in the state. I don't think anybody's gonna cut us any slack. And so I think the longer that we postpone the day of reckoning and tell people, you know, "Let's, let's just, you know, use a lot of water for things like lawn watering," which, you know, in any serious policy debate is gonna be the lowest priority, I think is the wrong direction to be going into. I mean, now, if, if you didn't care about that policy, if, if you were agnostic about usage, this is a more accurate way of determining that. I get that. But to me, the, the bigger picture is where we're going as a town and just the reality that we're gonna have to deal with one of these days.
I, I appreciate your comments, Alex. I think that the only comment I'd have in response is that if this was done across the board at everybody who had lawn sprinkler systems, we'd have a much better handle on what our water usage really is for the essentials of life as opposed to the luxuries of waters, watering. And if we did have to do some rationing, rationing, we could do it a lot better and a lot quicker and a lot more meaningful way. At this point, you're right, our number of water use per capita, I have no clue of where that water's going. Are we wasteful? Do we have leaks? Or are we using it for irrigate, you know? So one could argue that getting better data, and I'm not convinced that because of the prices we charge, it necessarily encourages people to water their lawns, just allows us to get better data and then implement whatever policies you might want down the road. But that's, again, a philosophical response as opposed to an absolute response.
Mark, that, that number that you talked about, DEP, has standards in place now. They haven't done enforcement, but they've been working at it for a while, and resident capita, that's, it's 65 gallons per person, per day. And right now, from my reporting that I do yearly for the state, we're probably up around 115. That's, that's the average right now in Long Meadow.
Which is one of the very highest in the state.
It's up there.
I mean, I've looked, I mean, you know, there's, the Boston Globe has done this.
Right, you look at the numbers.
We're, we're up there with communities like Marblehead and Weston and that sort of thing.
To the point that you were bringing up, and, and that Boston doesn't have to tell Long Meadow. Long Meadow, Long, Boston just has to tell Springfield. Because there's been discussions before in the past about, you know, why, why, how can somebody in Boston tell us what to do, but our contract with Springfield says that we have to comply with, with whatever the Boston imposes on Springfield.
Sure.
Because they're the ones that have the withdrawal permit, it's Springfield, and that's what we're under.
Just, you, you said something, and I know this might be a little bit off. Could there be leakage?
There, there is some small amount of leakage, and we, we, we've done testing, we've, we've had the system, we've had people go through and listen to the system, we did a leak detection, detection survey about five years ago, six years ago. And then three, I think that was, I think that was six years ago, and then three years ago, we had somebody come in and listen on all the valves in the street. And we have a pretty decent system.
Oh, we do.
You know, I'd have to say that. We, we, usually, if you have significant leakage, it turns to a water main break. It, it works its way to the surface.
Marie, we know how much water we purchase from Springfield at Forest Glen, and we know the sum of all the water our residents purchase.
Right.
And we compare the sum of what our residents use versus the amount we buy from Springfield, and that's the, and if you take out water hydrant flushing and a few other known things, it gets, it's pretty close.
Yeah, the leakage, it's unaccounted for water. I mean, so...
But it's not 2%, it's not even 3% of our...
The water we would throw out for the sewer jet, or, 'cause the flushing is a, it's a hypothetical amount.
So he said it's not 2%. Is that correct?
The difference between what we buy and what we sell.
The percent for unaccounted water.
No, it, it changes yearly depending on what's going on, but that's part of the reporting that I also do is, there is, that's the term, it's unaccounted water, from what you have purchased or produced as of...
But what is it as a percentage of what we buy?
This year, I haven't done the reporting yet, but last year, we were about 10, or 9.5%.
Wow.
DDP's number, they like to see 10% or less. And those numbers, they're getting very, before, if I had, let's say, we had a water main break, they don't consider that unaccounted water. You, you really have to prove, like services, now we may have water services, if you're in sandy soil conditions, that could be leaking for a year. We don't know about it, just, you know, then, they don't consider that unaccounted water, where I can take that number and make my total number lower, my percentage lower.
Yeah.
That's just lost water, we're paying for it, so, I mean, it could be, you know, it could be a lot tighter than that, but, I mean, to get it down under 10% is, is the number what DDP is looking at.
Okay.
I mean, we've had it some years, we've been down to, you know, 5%.
Well, thanks, you know, it's a little off, but I, thank you.
It's, it's part of it, it's part of the whole picture.
Yeah.
It's true, I mean, two comments, I think, one on either side of the argument. I guess the first is that, I mean, I don't know how many people get impacted by this because we do have, first, 220, as exams.
220 is what you get billed for, that's the cutoff.
Right.
So anything over that, residents are not billed a sewer.
And you can look at, I mean, so now we have the bylaw next. I mean, I think it's, I, I don't know if there's a pressing need to do this, I guess, like I said, Mark, I think on principle, like, I, I can see why this is something that makes sense, but I wanna make sure that it also makes sense from the standpoint of running our utilities, and we do, we do run those like businesses, I mean, they have to cash flow, they already said they're not general fund subsidized, they're completely separate, and they are, and rate payers and taxpayers are not the same. By and large, they are, but, you know, churches, Bay Path, Jewish nursing home, I mean, I'm sure Jewish nursing home is a large water customer, but is not a taxpayer, by and large. So I, I wanna make sure we're not taking a principled approach to something that really is a business decision. The other thing I'll say to Alex's comment is, I agree with that, and the idea of subsidizing irrigate, watering lawns, this on its face just seems like the ultimate first world problem, but there is a level by which, and someone, and I heard folks make this argument last year, you know, all we have are our, by and large, are our single-family homes, are built out, or largely, or largely, single-family homes, and what sustains our assessed value are the sales, are the continual sales of those homes. And one of the factors, I think, it's a minor factor, but one of the factors that maintains those sales are the appearances of those homes, including attractive landscaping. And so while I'm not saying it's a big reason, it is a, the use of irrigation and attractive landscaping on the homes in this community are a component of what I would say is our economic development model. So I don't wanna lose sight of that either, but I think the numbers Pete was citing, and you cited before, Alex, about our consumption, we may be a little overboard on it in terms of per capita consumption, but it is still, it's not, it's not a nothing, I think, in my view.
Thank you. I, I, you know, we can beat this to death, but maybe at a later date, I'd like to suggest that to, to Richard that we bring this up, but thank you, Mark. Do you have a couple of other copies of this that we can make sure that Paul and Richard get? Steven, why don't you, just give them to Steven and...
Whatever the mailbox is there.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And just as a note to the, you probably had some older, like the typical layout of the water meter, I think you might have had an older one, where that was actually showing a...
You got this one?
That's the newer one.
Right, okay.
That's, that's showing a true irrigation meter.
Right, okay.
The older one was actually showing a deduction meter. And what you're looking at now, this is the typical layout of our commercial accounts that have irrigation, but then again, they don't get the cutoff for 220.
Right.
So we do allow irrigation right now for commercial just for that reason, because of the cutoff, just wanna make sure you do that.
Okay. Thanks. Don't go anywhere, maybe, I don't know. The next thing we want to just talk briefly about is requested, suggested bylaw change for our Springtown meeting on water billing. And, and right now, our bylaws say that water will be billed by consumption, I think that's the quote, is by consumption. If you go back four years or not, and maybe three years, and beyond that, we had a fixed charge plus usage charge. When it was pointed out, and, and the interpretation was that by consumption meant that it only could be a dollars per, in this case, 100 cubic yards of, of water. We changed our water rate to a, a fixed rate. And I would like to hear the sense of what, you know, the other members of Select Board feel about proposing a bylaw change that will, that will modify our, our bylaws so that the water billing can reflect a fixed rate as well as a, a variable rate for usage. So I'm welcome to anybody's comments unless you want me to give you my argument for it.
I'd love to hear how other towns are doing it. In Massachusetts, is there an issue, or do you know if other towns are doing it?
Other, other towns are, and we looked into that.
Other towns are fixed plus variable.
Fixed plus variable. The same way your sewer bill is generated or charged, you pay a fixed rate, and I don't remember what the fixed rate is, it's like $16 and change. So you get that billed twice annually, well, that's the, the fixed part of your bill. It's not unlike your, your gas bill or your telephone bill, even if you don't use your phone, you still pay for the phone for, for the month. And it helps to sustain the system. At 5700 bills times $30 a year, I, I can't do the math.
$15,000.
Pardon me?
$15,000, $150,000.
We raised $240,000 on the sewer side from that fixed rate, with the, the rate of construction.
And the disadvantage?
I don't think there is a disadvantage. It, it's just that the bylaws that you have now, it says that the water shall be billed by consumption only.
Well, obviously, it had changed, it's, as you said, it used to be...
No, we were actually billing in, in variance to the, to, I used the word variance to, to the bylaws.
Oh, I see, okay, so...
I think we, it was done for a year, maybe, maybe two?
Two.
And then the, the mistake of our ways was pointed out to us by Attorney Martel, and we stopped that.
Oh, okay.
Marie, I think, you know, because of, because of the time of year, I can say this, but there are a number of people in town who are actually gone this time of year, maybe snowbirds or whatever it is, and they're not using water, and they pay zero. And in fact, though, we still have to maintain the system so that when they come back into town and turn on the tap, they want water to come through here. And we're talking about every year, a substantial amount of money that we invest in the, in the water infrastructure and replacing water mains, and yet, we have people who for a considerable amount of the year pay nothing. And, you know, my sense is that, you know, just like people do for their electric bill, for their gas bill, for their telephone bill, there's a fixed plus variable component, I'm not sure phone bills necessarily, but, but there's a fixed plus variable component of, of those, and I think the cost of our infrastructure, of, of debt service on our infrastructure doesn't go away, because, you know, if everybody in town turned off the tap, you know, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in charges that would continue, and we ought to be able to collect some of that. That would be my argument for doing this. The downside is, you know, are you making somebody pay for something they're not using? And that might be an argument. My argument would say they're paying for the ability to use it when they want it, and there's a, there's a cost for us to maintain it. Anyway, that's my reason, I don't know, I don't know if you have another question, or...
No.
Alex, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
No, I mean, again, to me, the big picture is, what is it, you're incentivizing, I mean, I guess, you know, the, it sounds like you're not really trying to incentivize anything.
I'm just gonna try and get people to pay for their, our cost of running a water department.
I mean, so in other words, it's to try to more justly allocate the cost.
Correct.
Okay.
And avoid fluctuations in revenue. I mean, we, your, the analogy of the gas bill or the electric bill is, I mean, it is, like I said, it's a utility, just like those are utilities. And you have your delivery charge, which means the price you pay, which is the fixed, essentially, charge, to have the ability to have these, the commodity, whether it's electricity, water, or gas, delivered to your doorstep. And then you pay your consumption charge on top of that, which is how much of it you allow, how much of you use in your home. And it is a sensible way to, and that's why, it, it makes sense to, to bill that way, that's why the other utility charges, utility companies do that. And I think it's something that I'm sure I wasn't here, but I guess, I guess the bylaw was intended to allow that to happen, and just wasn't, was inartfully worded.
I would hope so anyway, yeah.
But I guess, you know, to use the phone company analogy, you know, we've gotten to the sort of all-you-can-eat plan, it's pretty typical, you know, those of us, you know, who are old enough to remember, you know, being very sensitive to phone usage because it was a per-minute thing, long distance, all that. And I think what it has encouraged is you're, you're not mindful of how much time you're spending on the phone, which is fine these days, apparently, they've got plenty of capacity, and, and they don't care how much we talk. But I, you know, again, when we come back to water, you know, if, if too much of that fixed charge is the total cost, you're making people less sensitive to what they're consuming.
Well, that, that's part of, you know, our job as water commissioners, is to establish what the fixed rate is relative to the, the variable rate, but, but again, I mean, one could argue that all our fixed costs ought to go into the, the fixed portion of the rate. Practically, Alex, we can't do that. I mean, it'd just be too high, because if you look at our water bill, I think we're about 50/50 with variable and fixed, fixed cost there.
Right.
Which would be pretty darn hot, but, but my sense is that, like I said, you know, we have costs that don't go away even when the water's not flowing through the pipes. And, and it's not just our people cost, it includes money we've invested in, in a significant amount of infrastructure, so...
I think we're talking about increasing the rates, because we're talking about putting in a fixed amount, which I can understand, 'cause my concerns are when you tell me we still have four-inch water pipes in town, that according to the fire chief, won't give us the water pressure we need to fight a fire, when you're telling me we're up to 10% of leakage, I mean, there, there's infrastructure that needs to be repaired. But I think this needs a full board, water board, for us to really roll this over and have the full discussion, 'cause we'll start this and then we'll just have to repeat the discussion with the full board. So it's interesting to, to bring it up, and that we do need to discuss, but I think it needs to roll on the agenda.
Fine, I, I, two things, Marie. One, one is, I don't know that it means an automatic rate increase. I think what it means is a different increase. When we did it a few years ago, we actually set it so that, I think it was like the 20% or 25% level of usage had, had the same rate, and people below that paid a little bit more, people, some people above that paid a little bit, and it worked in different ways, but it does not mean an automatic rate increase. And a rate increase will result from higher costs of water usage and higher capital expenditures, but changing the, the billing process does not need to be, you know, rate increase, that'd be my first comment.
Bottom line, and the revenue is gonna be equal, it's a redistribution, basically, as you were...
Right, right.
We would raise X, it's just gonna be redistributed differently. On the sewer side, again, I think it's like $36 a year you pay for the flat fee, and, and the balance of it is...
And the balance of it is the consumptive portion.
And I forgot what we did when we did it that one year, but I think it was, it was based on meter size.
Yeah, it was based on meter size. The last time we did it was in FY11. We raised 100, and the estimate was we were raising $109,000 in fixed, in fixed costs based upon the meter size. That's probably about 13 cents on the rate at time, which is $2.07. So, you know, again, in the absence of that, it would have been, you know, $2.27. But again, that was the last time that we actually did it.
Marie, I, I hear your comments about the whole board and, and all water meters, water commissioners and all that kind of stuff. Two responses. One is, we're here tonight as, acting as the select board and the water commissioners. And yeah, I don't want to go out and do crazy things with two people not here, but, you know, I think there is an opportunity to, to discuss this further. But I'd like to do it under the presumption of, that we would have, be doing it as discussing whether or not to support a bylaw proposal, warrant article. And so I was hoping that we come out of here saying to town manager, with the support of our water department, looking at what other towns do, coming back and suggesting a change to our bylaws so that now we know what we're debating as opposed to debating something theoretical, but actually having something because we're getting up to the time when we need to have our bylaws, our warrant articles prepared. And I don't think anything's wrong with having them prepare the wording or develop the wording for a bylaw so that we can then discuss something in a little bit different fashion. I'm not saying we propose we adopt this in any means, but discuss this. And I'm wondering if either of you have any opposition to having the town manager go back and work with whoever he needs to work with, draft what the bylaw change might look like for the warrant.
Well, I think that he's already said, we're not talking, it was something that any of us could probably just pull the, I don't know if we need to direct the town manager to write a warrant article for this. I think March 2nd would be enough time for the full board to vote, to go forward on it, and then to ask them to, to sit down with Dave Martell and write up the warrant article. I mean, I don't think we have to vote.
The warrant articles are due either next week.
That's, no, I understand.
If the three of you vote a directive to prepare an article for the town meeting warrant, you still are a majority of the board, so the theory goes that there's support to do this. You can debate the merits of the article in the context of the warrant, and then there may not be a majority in support. But at least, at least it's a clear direction that.
Right, and that's my thought process.
A majority of the board wants to have the discussion in the context of the warrant.
And Marie, the reason I want to do that is so we avoid this closing the warrant, opening the warrant, closing the warrant kind of stuff, so that this comes in with the original warrant and we can decide whether to keep it on the warrant as we move forward, as opposed to having to open the warrant to bring it on again. That's why I asked for the support of just putting something together, you know.
And then the full board would have the right to discuss. You'd have to bring them back to answer Richard and Paul's questions.
Okay.
And what they were going to do with it. I mean, I guess I'm worried about having this done when Richard's not here and.
I agree.
It's not gonna be done.
It's not done. It's just, you know, saying there's at least a few of us who want to get this thing to the point where we have a full discussion by the board as opposed to wanting to draw.
No, I guess, to me, the, again, the idea is sort of what I was saying about the previous item that we discussed. To me, the bigger picture is, you know, are we moving in the right direction of trying to encourage wise water consumption? To me, this seems to be going in the other direction, so.
Why are you saying that?
Well, I mean, what I was just saying, you make something of all or part a fixed rate, you're making people less sensitive to what they're consuming. The example I gave is the all you can eat phone bill, right, versus how phone bills used to be. Used to be very concerned of how many minutes you're on the phone. Now you don't care at all because it's all one price. So to, so to me, any, to any degree that you make it fixed, you're making people less sensitive to consumption, which seems to me to be going in the wrong direction.
Yeah, and that my counter is, but equity says that people who aren't using water for some period of time still ought to be paying for the fixed costs that we've invested for their ability to use water when they do want to use it. You know, and again, my argument is the snowbirds who literally have zero water usage and a bill of $2 or $10 for six month period, when we still have all those other fixed costs that went into allowing them to use water for the other six months of the year. And, and so I think, I'd ask you to balance that.
Right.
Philosophy with, I understand what you're saying too.
Right. And I get your point that, I mean, to me, what you're describing is sort of a more fine tuning of allocation of the burdens of the system. And I guess my, my sense is that, you know, probably washes out in the end. I mean, you know, to me, the inequity that we're talking about isn't huge, you know.
There's no way to know until you do it, but anyway.
I know the discussions, Eric, we've talked about those before. The factor that the water is available at that meter at any given time. And even like you talked about the snowbirds, when they come back, it's still there. They're, you know, when they're here, it's there. When it's gone, it's, there's still a cost. There's still a cost for that.
Right.
Right, and it's kind of a balance because, right, you don't want to say, you know, there's a fixed cost, it's paid for everything, and then you can go crazy with your water and irrigate and, right, there is that conservation thing too. So it's kind of something you have to come up with a happy medium on that.
Marie?
Well, I move that we ask the town manager to prepare a warrant article and a bylaw change to be discussed at a further select board meeting.
Second? Is there a second? I'm gonna second it because I can't. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass is two to one. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Pete. I'm sure we'll talk more about this and it'll be appropriately discussed, so. But at least I think we'll have a, something in front of us to discuss so we'll know what we're talking about. The next item on our agenda is a K-9 unit. So Steven, I guess you wanted to, were you gonna make a further presentation on this?
No, I mean, I'll be very brief. This is something we talked about a couple of years ago. I was relatively new. And presented this in the board, had rejected it for concerns over future costs. You know, the grant is intended to cover the establishment and first three years of a K-9 program. And I was concerned about costs beyond the three years. And so we didn't pursue it. It came, we got the solicitation from the foundation again, and largely due to a deadline of January 31st, I went ahead and submitted the application and then, you know, wanted to get, because it had been discussed before, I wanted to put it on the agenda to get the board's input. I have to, you know, under the charter, one of the town manager authorities is writing grants. And so, and I did talk to town council today, and I don't, yeah, I don't think he's written an opinion on this about, but it wasn't clear to me, you know, what, you know, acceptance or, you know, what role the select board has taken voting on these types of things. Because there are, there are grants that the town gets that the select board doesn't vote on. And I didn't know if this fell, there are certain grants that the grantor requires a vote. But in terms of a general policy for the town or, there really is, the bylaws don't say anything. That's why I was a little confused. So I wasn't sure that it required a select board vote, but since we talked about it last time, I wanted to talk to the board about it again and just say, I've applied for this, we haven't received the money, they're waiting to hear back from us. If there's no overwhelming objection, we intend to move forward and implement this based on the change, the two primary factors that I lay out that make this, I mean, I thought our police chief was, came before the board two years ago and talked about how it would be a valuable tool, valuable enforcement tool for him. And then had a dog officer, I think from Wilbraham, come and talk about all the many different ways that it assists the Wilbraham Police Department. So I think, two things that have changed is we really have had a much, it seems like an increase in property crimes, car breaks. We went through that rash of house breaks in the Blueberry Hill neighborhood. They did call in the state police K-9 unit during that time, but as a, you know, the scent went cold, literally, by the time the police dog got here. The other thing that changes this, for me anyway, makes this, I think, the right time to do this program, is that in three years, when the grant funding no longer covers the cost, we will be receiving annual mitigation payments from MGM, a small portion of which could be used, because it is really, it really is a, I think it'll be a minimal additional cost than we have today to keep the program. And mitigation funds could be used to offset that because, quite frankly, one of the things we learned in our, through our surrounding community, application process and arbitration was drug crimes and property crimes are two things that will lead to be on the lookout for being in a community next to a casino. And K-9 units are especially valuable in investigating those types of crimes, so. That's, that's my sales pitch.
Marie?
Well, you actually bring up two very interesting points. One is I noticed in the town manager reports, several grants that we're applying for and we don't hear about, and we just hear we were, we don't vote on those. So how we vote on the K-9 unit is, and it's not required, I do see, I don't understand why we would vote on it. In regards to whether a K-9 unit is a great idea, I mean, that's all I kept thinking as these cars were being broken into and the houses. With the casinos, we are expecting an increase in crime, I think. And I know that this board had discussed, well, the, there might be increased costs within the police department, and I think then it's up to the police department to find ways of paying for that. If they come to us for an increase, or they come to the town manager, an increase in their budget, that's really something that's got to be decided and on what is their priorities going forward. I think, I would definitely support it. I just don't know if we even have to vote on it. I personally don't think we should have to vote on it, but that's where I stand on it.
I think at the time, I first presented this, I didn't know any better. And I'm not, and like I said, I'm not trying to, to pull a fast one or anything else. I mean, I, I did have a conversation with town council about what are the limits of the town manager's authority on this. I mean, there are tons of grants we get and it kind of raised a more global question for me that, like I said, I can't believe there isn't a clear direction on. But like I said, this is the right time. Two years ago, you know, we looked at what were the costs of sending somebody to training and overtime, and that is, if we had to pay overtime for every single hour that the dog officer was in training for this, and we likely would not have to do that because you have comp time and people filling in for shifts and things like that, there are other ways to do it, it was not even $3,000. Part of the grant is eligible, there are funds available to offset that cost. Concerns were raised about a vehicle. Right now, I think our first Ford Explorer that we bought, which is a new vehicle we're moving towards for patrol vehicles, our, the first one that's getting ready to come off of first line service will be coming off for FY16 and will be replaced. So we'll be able to repurpose that, get that vehicle outfitted with the equipment, which again, the grant pays for, suitable for a K-9 unit. And so we wouldn't need to get a special vehicle or a new vehicle. The new vehicle we purchased would be the patrol car, and then the one that's coming off would be the K-9 unit car. Again, food, veterinary care, things like that, they're all, the intent of the grant is to really make it so it has, that these K-9 units have no impact for the first few years for departments. And then again, it's up to the department to make the adjustment going forward. Because we have a source of funds that I believe are directly connected with the use of the K-9 unit, it makes sense to me.
Alex, you have any questions?
Well, I guess I have a comment. I guess I was shocked when I saw this. And I say this as somebody who voted for it, so it's not on the merits of it. It's to go forward on a grant like this with the express vote of the select board to the contrary, I just don't understand.
It's just the right thing to do for the town, Alex, that's why I do it. You said you didn't understand, I'm just gonna explain why I do this.
Okay. Maybe, maybe I'm not being clear enough. I think I am, but you're maybe not wanting to hear it. To, I don't know, I guess to me, that maybe this was sort of a way to sort of assert authority of the town manager over something. I don't think this is an effective way of doing that and to present us with a fait accompli. Again, that's your choice. I don't think it's a wise move. To me, it's, it's, I just, I think it's a bad idea what you, what you did. What could have easily have done, you could have done is come to the select board and say, I want you to reconsider it. Again, on the merits, I support you. That's not the point. So your, your idea and my idea of what's good for the town are exactly right on this particular point. But what is also important is the institutional question. And to sort of run right over that and to, rather than ask for permission to seek forgiveness afterwards is, again, not something that is typical in, in government. So I would, but you did it, so there you go.
So here, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
You agree with the substance, but because you're mad that I did it, you don't want to support this.
No, that's not the.
That's what I'm, I don't know how to interpret what you're saying.
It's, it's a question of, in government, the point isn't what you do, it's who's doing it, on what authority, and with what approval. There are lots of things that one can do in government that are good ideas, that one, if given approval, would get that approval. But you're dead wrong if you don't follow the procedures. So that's, that was the issue that I, that I have with.
You know, I would say, to clarify, is that under the charter, the town, one of the town manager authorities is writing grants.
Actually, it says coordinating.
Coordinating writing, right, because usually the departments actually write the grants. That's what the term coordinating refers to. So, and this is, like I said, I agree with you. In fact, I led off with the institutional question. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to hide from that.
Then why not, then why didn't you come to us beforehand?
Because of the deadline. I explained that already. The deadline came up and we didn't want to lose the opportunity because I can apply for the grant. I can apply for the grant without approval, Alex.
So when did they, when did you become aware of it?
In January sometime. I think mid-January. And it tricked me, it sat at my desk, and then I looked at the deadline and said, and I did notify the chair that I was going to apply for the grant because of the deadline, which is in my authority to do, to apply. If you're saying that if the select board opposes something, it's opposed to it forever, then you're right. I mean, I made an error in judgment. But I'm allowed to apply for grants. And as I said, we haven't accepted the grant, we've just received it. And I have this institutional question because we do get a lot of grants that the select board doesn't weigh in on, and I don't know why that is. That's certainly been going on since long before I got here. And I have an open question as to what the limits of the authorities are in terms of grant writing. I've never understood really why this didn't, like I said, you supported it last time, and you were the one that, I mean, you didn't attend the meeting, but you did organize a meeting with residents of Blueberry Hill where they were concerned. And I would think anyone would have a hard time looking those people in the face saying they didn't get behind us 100% because this could help in situations just like they went through. And so I guess I just, I just want to get a sense of, you know, to move forward. And we can have, I've asked Attorney Martel to look into this question of grants and acceptance and, and we can hold off till then. I mean, I don't want to leave the Stanton Foundation hanging forever, but we can certainly hold off till the next meeting and have that discussion. But I, I don't know that I see you need to do that because I do think that there are so many grants that the town gets annually, like routine grants, that the select board doesn't weigh in on, that I don't know, and certainly accepting grants, there is something in the statute about select boards approving the acceptance of grants. in the statute about select boards approving the acceptance of grants, but then the charter, it seems like that is delegated to the town manager by that enumerated authority, that's the question I have for Attorney Martel.
Oh, I mean, I guess my point is, in nothing that I've said, I think I've been pretty clear, is to denigrate the idea of a K-9 unit, okay? That's not the point. The, I guess, to me, for the select board and the town manager to work well together, you know, we have to have a good working relationship, and to sort of openly defy a vote of the board, to have the, I mean, it reminds...
I think it's a tone characterization of what we're doing.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna take, so Marie, I'm gonna let you make a comment, cause you want to, but I just want to, I just want to try to turn this back from a one-on-one to a select board discussion.
Well, I, I guess my point, I guess what I'm trying to say is, that we had a vote on this very subject, and this is the exact opposite.
Right, and you stay to your point, and I get your point, the town manager stayed to his point.
It's not, it's not a good relationship, if you have that.
Thank you, thank you, yes, to Marie.
I don't even know where to begin. If this, the issue on the police dog happened a year and a half ago?
Two years.
Two years ago, okay. I think it, there's absolutely nothing wrong with revisiting the issue. The fact that the town manager described that a certain, there's not always evil intent, there's not always a attempt to put something over on someone else, and I am really tired of the characterization of whether it's employees, or whether it's other board members, of doing things with, with ill intent. Right now, it was brought in front of us, he had a deadline, he submitted it, it wasn't anything bad for the town, it's brought in front of us, it was talked about with the chair, there was nothing that was done that I think was terrible here. And what we need to do is, we need to start stepping back and saying, you know, the relationship among those boards is important, but more important is what is best for this town, let's get the work done, let's do what's best for this town. And, you know, I think that the residents are tired of hearing about how this group is getting along, and where intents are. Our emotions and our intents don't matter, let's get the work done. It's brought in front of us, the K-9 unit, we had a canceled meeting, this is now the next meeting, it's being brought before us, if this board decides, and I don't think, if this board decides, if we can't get a vote of three to zero, we shouldn't even vote on it, if this board decides they want to kill the police dog again, then we can do it, and there's no way that the town managers can stop us, so we have the power to do this. But right now, let's step back and say, what is best for this town? And we are again, a fabulous organization, is offering this. I don't think the town manager has done anything to insult this board in any way, and I think bringing the K-9 unit issue in front of us, especially when the money is available to us, again, let them bring it back every year, it's, it's no insult to us, and we will reasonably discuss on what we feel is best for the town, and that's what should matter. And if we decide we're going to take issues, and just go on certain ways because we want to fight amongst these other, it's gotta stop. And I'm not gonna sit here and listen to us discuss roles and responsibilities and charters again, let's, we're talking K-9 unit now, and that's what I want to hear.
Thank you, Marie. I'd like to put my comments in here, and I think that, you know, I have a couple of comments. I actually did go back to the June 17, 2003 select board meeting.
2003?
2013.
2013, okay.
It feels like it was 2000.
Yeah, 2013 select board meeting, that this was discussed, the minutes are, are pretty clear, there were notes I took that were a little bit more detailed, but I, you know, to the largest extent, I think when I read this, I kind of felt the same thing that Alex expressed, was that, that, and Stephen, I heard your comment, that said, you know, there are things the select board shouldn't even weigh in on, and grants are some of them. And the answer to that, and my comments to that, is that's probably correct, but when you ask and you get an answer, we gave you an answer. So it is better to not ask and ask forgiveness, because when you do ask and get an answer, it comes across as, all the things that people don't like it, that sound like it comes across when it gets, it gets done anyway, but, and I picked on that, because the factors that you identified for now applying were a better understanding of the town manager's select board roles, and I'm, you know, that's clearly your, your different interpretation, as opposed to a better understanding, I'm not sure we have yet come to an understanding, but that's just my opinion, but interpretation. But I'm also concerned about this, this whole thing about the MGM, you know, even discussing potentially using MGM mitigation funds for this, when, you know, I just am concerned that we're gonna find 5,000 things that we're gonna be spending future money on from MGM, when we said it was for traffic mitigation, and although I'm probably be the first person to say there may be other issues that we want to use it for, I'm not sure that now, and this is the, the way and the place to decide how we're gonna use, potentially use future MGM funds, and that concerned me as well, when I, when I read through this. In general, I think this is, remains a bigger issue, the discussions were, as you indicated, both about payments and costs beyond three years, but there were a significant number of discussions in 2013 about how this implied, how this impacted personnel policies with regard to the K-9 police officer and time, and what, you know, costs for the police dog, and having the dog at home, and when is he working and not working, and on-call, and call-ins, and things like that, that were never, to my satisfaction at least, addressed, and have not yet been addressed, and so to me, they still have, those same issues are unresolved. I was one of the people who actually voted against the motion at the time, because of those unresolved issues. At this point, Marie, there is no vote to take.
No.
The issue has been, you know, it's, it's a fait accompli, we're not being asked our permission to apply, we're not even being asked our authority, authorization to apply, we're being told that the town applied for it, and with that, there's, you know, there is no other reason to discuss this, I guess.
I need to clarify, Mark. The ability for further me to apply, the authorizate, the authority to do that is 100% clear, and I didn't know that last time. Again, we have not received, we have received approval of the grant, but not accepted the grant funds, and not, you know, started the process of establishing the K-9 unit. I do believe there's an open question as to whether that requires a select board vote or not, and that's, you know, not just related to the K-9 unit, that's a, an organizational I guess, but separating all of that, it's a free grant, there's no local match, and in three years, we were, and again, the cost of, to keep the program going are really minimal, I mean, maybe, maybe the thousands of dollars extra, not, I don't think tens of thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe thousands of dollars extra. And so at 275 grand, this I think is a good use of those funds, and I'm gonna be the one that makes those recommendations to the board going forward, or the town manager will. And that's why I didn't just bring back the same thing, again, I could have done it in 2014, but because in 2015, the circumstances for the town have changed, and my knowledge of our police operations and the, and the crimes that are most persistent in our community have changed, that's why I thought this was the right time to bring this forward. And you're right, I mean, I don't know that there's a vote or not, but if we want to wait and get some guidance from council before we accept the grant, I'm, I'm fine to do that. If the board just says, you know, this makes sense, let's just do it, then I'm fine to do that too.
My, my take on this tonight is that there is no vote needed, but I...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're, I mean, I guess if the town manager's seeking our blessing for it, I don't know what...
I think he was informing us of it, and I personally think anyone, I think there were 200 cars that were broken in over the summer, and this fall, I think there were eight to 10 houses in one area alone. I mean, I'm excited that they would consider us, considering we were given the grant in 2013, and we refused to accept it.
Well, we didn't, are you gonna apply?
Oh, we didn't apply, I thought we had applied and received it.
We had not applied.
Oh, okay. So, that, you know, I agree, I don't think there is a vote that needs to be had. I thank you for bringing it forward and explaining that we have applied, and I hope we do get it. That's it.
Mark.
Alex, go ahead.
I mean, just so that whoever's watching, you know, we don't get too excited about this K-9 unit, I mean, Stephen, do you, do you, you understand dogs, they have specialties. I'm, I'm not sure that a dog that's gonna be sniffing for drugs, and specific drugs at that, is also gonna be the dog that's going to be, you know, sniffing clothing and, and, you know, on the hot pursuit of burglars. I mean, is, has there even been any discussion about what you want the dog to do?
Mine's...
That was something that we did discuss with the police chief, when it was voted on last time.
And what the chief said, I think that, and the dog officer said was, generally, there are dogs who do explosives, and dogs who, I almost said dogs who do drugs, I meant dogs who detect drugs. There may be dogs who do drugs as well, I may join them after this meeting. But no, I think that it was really explosives or drugs, like the airport, you know, depending on the specialty, those were the, the kind of dividing line. You can't get a dog that does drugs, explosives, you know, all this other stuff, but I think you can get one that can help in thefts, because when I discussed this with the chief, he said, yeah, that would really, it would really help with some of these crimes, and if we're gonna get more drugs, this, this one type of specialized K-9 unit can do that. Now, we may get into the training and into the depth of this thing, and decide that maybe it's not even a right fit, maybe we can't get a dog that does what we need it to do, and we don't end up pursuing the thing, but we can't really get there until we start this process. And like I said, you know, Alex, you, I'm sorry, Marie, you used the word blessing, I guess, I mean, the blessing would be nice, but like I said, I, you know, I don't want to repeat myself repetitively, but I don't mind holding off and getting, getting an opinion and clarifying, is I, I don't, that's why, I mean, I, I feel like you, if I had just said, oh, by the way, the K-9 unit's gonna be showing up on May 1st, the reaction I got from you on this, I think would be justified in that, in you too, Mark, I think would be justified in that moment, but I have it here to discuss, to say, I'm, it's not clear to me what the limit, I know I can apply, I don't know about implementing it, so let's discuss that, or if you guys decide, you know, we should discuss that, but this is such a good thing, we should just go ahead and do it, we can have that discussion.
I'd like to follow up on what Alex says, I know they did say the different ones, and I prefer one that could really do the burglary, so if we do end up with a bomb sniffing one, then maybe we'll trade him off, because...
Well, we have a choice, I mean, it's, you select.
Yeah, because it would be nice if we did a little drugs on the side too, but I really would like to have the burglary one, so, I'm sure that's the way the chief feels also.
Like I said, it's specifically because of those crimes.
Yeah.
Stephen, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, I'm not prepared, I don't think we're prepared tonight, certainly with a subset of the board here, I don't think it would even be appropriate for us to take that definitive action on something that, A, has already been voted on, and B, was voted on by a vote of two to two to one, which is as close as it gets, so it wasn't even a three to two, it was a hung jury, if you will, so, you know, to some extent, let's move this forward and see if there is a greater sense of, of a five-person board than a three, and I hope we don't go through the same discussion in two weeks.
But it's like the article, Mark, I mean, if a majority of the board, the three of you feel like we don't really need a board vote on this and endorse the concept, then I can go forward. If you, if the majority of you don't feel like this is, that we should wait, then we'll wait.
Well, my, my, my call on this, if I can make a call, is that you don't have a three to nothing support, so we should wait.
Well, my understanding is you don't have the grants, so there's really nothing, it's still processing.
No, he said he does have the grant, he just doesn't have the dog.
We have, we've received, we've received approval of the grant, we just have not said, send us the money.
Oh, okay, I would put it on the next agenda.
As you, I think you were saying, that we have to accept the grant.
That's, that is the, when you talk about the, the process matter, that, I mean, we just said, don't send us the check, until we sort this question out.
Right.
But that's the whole question of accepting grants, is, is the open, open question, because like I said, lots of grants come through the town, that have been coming through the town for years, that the board doesn't vote on, and if we've been doing it wrong the whole time, then we'll have to make a repair, if we've been doing it right, then this would fall into that category, but the only reason I brought it back is because it was, it came up two years ago.
I'd like to push this to a next meeting.
Okay.
Agreed.
With that, we're, just a couple more items, the subcommittee reports, I mean, does the operations subcommittee, other than we reacted on the, on the traffic calming report, is there any more?
I have this, that, I have other things to talk about, though.
For subcommittee reports?
I guess you'd call liaisons.
Go ahead.
Okay. I put a letter in the correspondence packet, just so it would get in the packet. On Scantic Valley, first of all, I have to thank Arlene Miller and Paul Pasturjik, and working with Scantic Valley, they came out with 0% increase, which was hugely important to our budget this year, I mean, really, really important. And Scantic Valley's worked really hard in order to build up a reserve, and they used it in our favor this year, so I really want to thank the work they've done, it's phenomenal. And the letter I put together is during the Scantic Valley meeting, and I've had several discussions with them, we have a frustrating thing that other towns are trying to deal with, and that is when we have early retirees who leave the area, right now, Scantic Valley says that we have to contract with local insurance companies for out-of-state services, which is extremely expensive. And we have, Scantic Valley has been increasing those rates to sort of discourage active members sitting on that, but it still means they're outrageously high, and they do cost the town money. Now, we only have a few people on these plans, but I keep saying, why do we have to do this? And they keep saying, it's the law, and I said, well, where is the law? And they said, well, we can't look it up, it's somewhere, and then they said, well, maybe it's a regulation. And I know other towns have just said, oh, forget it, and they're just going ahead and contracting out, and I'm being told that's against the law. Now, the lieutenant governor has said that they've put together this committee to help local towns handle specific problems, and cut through the red tape, so I put together just a, a rough draft of a letter to send to this committee through Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, asking them if they can help us with whether it's a regulation, which it could be, or whether it is actually a statute saying that we are stuck with paying these very high rates. If it's in the private industry, then you can actually, they give them money to go contract locally, and with the Affordable Care Act and the health connectors that are across the country, I don't think this is a hard fix. So I was wondering if I could use select board stationery when I send this letter.
Okay with me.
I mean, I guess my, my only reaction to, I'm, I am, first of all, very glad you're on this issue, I mean, what you're saying makes total sense. I guess, as I read this letter, I'm just kind of thinking of the reader.
Oh, you could wordsmith it, you know, I'm not known for that.
No, 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 believe me, I don't like that, but, like, we don't, like, you know, considering that maybe Karen Polito will read it, probably not, probably some staffer will read it, they make question, why are they coming to us? They can't get it straight between their own, you know, Scantic Valley and themselves, what law we're talking about. I think it would be more powerful to have sort of narrowed that down.
Well, I, no, I can't, actually, I can't, it's for the past year, I even went to Attorney Martel, when I was chair, I said, where is the law? I actually looked at the statute, and I can't find where this is. Now, I've talked to GIC, not GIC, I talked to MMA's insurance company, and I spoke to their group insurance, and they says, yeah, yeah, you can't do it. I said, why? And they couldn't tell me why, they said, no, you just can't do it. And then at one point, the consultant at Scantic Valley says, well, you know, it's, it's the general insurance law, you can't, Massachusetts can only sell Massachusetts policies, and you can't cross borders. So I'm not sure if it's even federal law, if it's state law, or if it's a regulation. And I'm hoping that they will cut through, and if they say, no, go ahead and just give them money, that's fine, then I'll just use, maybe their blessing's wrong, we'll just go ahead and jump through it. And if you're looking and saying, well, how much will this be, well, it might save us $20,000 a year, but that's $20,000. Well, it might save us $20,000 a year, but that's $20,000.
And I'm not, I am 100%, but I guess the thing that I come away with is, I am shocked that Scantic Valley and this insurance company is acting on something as important as this without them knowing what the law is, to insist upon it.
Yeah.
And then to be sort of challenged on it and say, well, we don't know, but, you know, we're holding firm to it, I think is ridiculous. It's one of these, like, government is dysfunctional stories.
But the question of the evening is, do you have any objection to reusing select board stationery?
That's right. If she wants to send it, that's fine.
And ruining some staff person's week when they get this thing, right? And try and dig into this.
And for that purpose, I would suggest you might want to copy an Eric Lesser and Brian Nash.
Sounds good to me, because actually, I mean.
Because when you're talking about.
See if they can figure out where Dave Martel and the insurance companies put on.
Staff person's day, yeah.
Like Michael Clarke's day.
Right, whatever.
All right, that's a good idea. I will see, see.
I'm thinking of this one.
Do you have any other?
Yes, the other thing is, on the COA, I just wanted to let you know that there, there was a discussion about the $35,000 that was on the warrant. They are putting another warrant article on for this spring, and it was decided that they probably should make it a citizen's petition because the previous one was. So the unspent funds, they're asking to spend it on the warrant. So that's the only thing that's happened on COA, since I'm the liaison, I thought I should report.
So what do they want to spend the unspent funds on?
The, well, they're working on the warrant article, you'll see it next week.
This is what we were discussing last week.
Yes.
Oh, you were, we had, they had a big discussion about the senior center and the design costs.
I can talk to you about that one.
And that's it.
Actually, can I follow up as a question on that? You know, when Mr. Petroff was here last week, I meant to ask him this, but I, we were actually focused on the senior center. We had gotten some correspondence last year about how they, they wanted to start a dialogue about increasing their budget for salutary reasons, and then that was sort of the end of what I heard about it. Where, where are they on that? Has that been discussed at all?
Well, I think what happened is when the new department head came in, and she proposed her budget, and I think that she may, the suggested budget was discussed with the COA, so that's really, they decided to go through the process of their department head working with town manager, and then we'll see the final results of that. But I think they decided, once they got in the department head, they would just work through the process of the actual director.
She did go, she did present her recommended budget to the COA board, so they did look at it and endorse it. In terms of the budget, there was an increase proposed for the COA budget. That letter was co-signed by the COA Chair, Bob Petroff, and the Faloka Chair, Bill Maury. I will say that the net effect has been the budget's increased largely to offset reductions in funding to the center from Faloka. So, in one way, they did accomplish their goal of increasing funding for the center, but by and large, the service expansions that I think they wanted to see aren't really going to materialize because Faloka had been covering certain costs and is no longer going to be covering them.
You all set up?
Yep.
Okay, I have a couple of things. One is that finance subcommittee met last Friday evening with the school committee, got a review of the school committee budget, also has now looked at the overall town budget, has a couple of more meetings just to review the overall town budget. My hope is that the review by the, by the subcommittee will help identify some issues to the town manager, to Paul Pesterzic, so that when it comes before the entire select board, those issues are better described, explained, identified, whatever it is, and so that discussions go more smoothly than they might have gone had there not been a first-pass look at it. I will note that the school committee's budget proposal, and as the town manager indicated earlier this evening, we have an overall, the town manager's budget submission is an overall balanced budget within the limits of our current taxing ability. And there is an agreement between the school committee at this point and the town that this would be, you know, certainly a good budget to move forward with the town meeting. I think the question for the select board is, are there any other issues that we might want to see added, subtracted, multiplied, or divided, I guess, I don't know how to otherwise put it, that we might, might suggest of moving around? I will say that the finance subcommittee, which is myself and Paul Santinello, did talk about a couple of potential issues, and that is, are there opportunities, or is there a need to use within the levy limit cap funds for any of our major capital projects that we're looking at down the road? Read that as DPW department facility, adult center, whatever it is, and might there be an opportunity to do that, as well as a discussion briefly about looking at our overall capital expenditures for next year relative to our ability to actually execute them, given the potentially high dollar amount that are on that list. And I think that might be, those may go hand in glove in terms of if there's a feeling that maybe we want to pare back capital a little bit, put that money toward part of a bond for some of these major projects, we might want to be able to discuss that. But I think it's an overall discussion and not something necessarily get into tonight, but I did want to give you that kind of heads up. I don't have any other reports on the finance committee, other than we appreciate the school committee coming forward and presenting that to us, but I do have two other items, and one may be a couple of minutes that I want to talk about, and that is correspondence. We did receive some letters this.
Can I ask a question about what you just said?
Sure, go ahead, Alex.
You were making reference to there being agreement between the school committee and the town, and who is the town?
No, it's not an agreement. It is a review between the school committee, and it was the town manager and the chairman of the select board, that the current budget, as they put it together, was a balanced process. So that's who I would say represented the town. Is that a fair statement?
I would say, we agreed that it was a good thing they were able to balance the budget and with accomplishing the needs of both the school committee, the school department and the general government.
And the details and the money and all that other stuff, you know, we're not going to get into tonight, but there's dollars behind all the discussions. I wanted to go through, there was a correspondence we got, one of the ones that concerns me is, came from residents at Quintetuck, on Quintetuck Drive, and it essentially said, you think it's bad before with the snow mounds, it's even worse now because we can't get out of our driveways. Although my initial response personally, not to them, in writing, my personal response was, and I can't get out of my driveway, and I don't live on Quintetuck Drive, and there's, what I know their comments are, that, you know, if cars are coming down your road at a very high frequency and a higher rate of speed, then you'd like it to be, getting out of your driveway is even more difficult. I think that one of the things that concerns me is that we have yet to be able to address any of the issues and concerns that the folks in Quintetuck Drive brought to our attention a couple of months ago, to initially brought up even longer ago, and I'm truly concerned that we have not been able to do anything to try to address the issue other than pass a traffic calming policy this evening that still doesn't do anything specifically for Quintetuck Drive. And with that in mind, I'd like to suggest we revisit our directive to the town manager, which was, please do something short of closing the road, to say, please do something short of closing the road. And I will tell you that I've gone so far as to, I've had, I will tell you, I've had phone calls from people on Quintetuck, I've met with people who live on Quintetuck Drive in the last month, and, you know, one of the things that I would be willing to see put up, no way am I authorized to do this or to tell anybody to do it, but I think is people drive south on Frank Smith Drive, which is from Maple toward Wool Swamp, you know, to put up signs that say, no right turn onto Quintetuck, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then going west on Wool Swamp Road from East Long Meadow toward Wool Swamp School, say, no left turn, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's consistent with traffic calming procedures, same things that we had in our list tonight that we talked about, it's signage. It would immediately address the issue, it would give the residents the sense that we're trying to do something, and let us take an action that would move forward. And again, you know, I thought we had asked the town manager to try to get something done. It hasn't gotten done, I think we failed them.
You know, Mark, I, we talked about this at the last meeting.
Okay.
Someone from Quintetuck was there, and I'll defer to Alex and Marie in the conversation they heard. But after the kind of chaotic discussion about Quintetuck, where it was all Fast and Furious and roles and responsibilities and who has the authority to do what, it was really unclear to me, we decided, let's do the traffic calming policy, because that will clarify things, and we don't have to take an ad hoc approach to Quintetuck Road, especially since the weather turned and the ground, it didn't snow necessarily, but the ground froze, and you can't put signs up now anyway. It's three feet of snow out there, you can't even, how are you going to drive a channel bar into the dirt? I mean, I think it's, there's the physical limitations of installing signage. But the board did have a discussion about this, and I thought the consensus was last week that we were going to do the traffic calming policy and run the analysis of Quintetuck through that. So the approach we take on Quintetuck, which belongs to the 15,000 residents of Long Meadow, we can come up with an answer that works for the 15,000 residents of Long Meadow. And, you know, I wouldn't say nothing has happened. The traffic calming policy is the thing that happened.
I guess my question is, so we have a consensus, what is the next step according to the traffic calming policy? Are we at the point where it's, the letter's already gone to the traffic committee, and now it's back to the select board? And the recommendations were made from the traffic committee, and now the select board is supposed to, I got to go back to my policy, the select board is supposed to review the, and we're supposed to decide to employ stage one, we're supposed to presumptively consider a stage one. And so now it's down to us deciding what we want to put in, because I guess we could say, well, we already said the speed humps, but we, those can't go in now. So maybe we should say, we're now back to the select board again deciding on stage. My question is, I'm asking, where does everyone feel we need, we should be in this process?
To me, you know, and we had this discussion with Richard, I never really thought, and I expressed this to the resident, that the existence or non-existence of the traffic calming policy was going to be a barrier. Richard felt otherwise, and I respect why he did, but the, to me, the sort of decision point was, you know, we had a discussion, you and I were in favor of temporary blockage, there wasn't a majority for that, there was a majority for speed humps, fine. To me, the next significant thing that happened, which we haven't addressed, is that the people that were trying to benefit, the residents of Quintetuck Road, said, don't do that, do something else. And so to me, the fact that the people we're trying to help are saying, don't do the thing that you voted on, does, you know, mean that we have to reconsider it. And to me, that's sort of where we are. Should we reconsider the speed humps? Should we do the signage that they're suggesting? And, Mark, they had different signs, you know, they had different stop signs, you know, again, you'd probably come up with all, you know, a variety of signs. The point that Stephen brought up, which I didn't know about, is that it sounds like it's physically impossible to put in signs.
No, it's physically impossible to put permanent signs into the ground, but we can put in all kinds of signs if we wanted to.
So, I mean, I guess, you know, I think we are, to me, what you're bringing up is sort of addressing where we are, because that's, you know, that's sort of reconsidering the vote that we took in light of the residents' concerns. And, you know, to me, this letter that we have in our packet this week is just sort of a further, you know, iteration of what we got, I think, in December, where they said, don't do speed humps, you know, do other things, you know? And so now they're trying to sort of put an exclamation point on it, which is, do it now, you know? And, you know, and I think they make a good argument, actually, for this temporary blockage, although I would be loath to want to vote on this, considering that Marie and I are the two, and I wouldn't want that to go through without five people being here.
We would need three votes to make it reasonable.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want something like that to pass on that basis. But if you were in favor of it, Mark, then I would be okay with it. I mean, the sign, you know, my attitude, you know, as was the speed humps, is like, okay, if that's not possible, let's go to something that is possible, you know?
I'll repeat myself again, as they say, is that, you know, I believe closing the road temporarily or permanently is a severe issue, a severe action, and not having tried any other action, I would be opposed to it. I would not oppose closing the road, somewhere down the road, if we found out that two or three interim steps didn't do it. I think I've been consistent in saying that all along, and that's why I've said right off the top, we should do something, you know? And I truly believe signage will work. Stephen, I understand the road is, the ground is frozen, but, you know, we have all kinds of temporary signs, we've got bucket loaders and bulldozers that can clear a section of a tree belt somewhere to put a temporary winter sign up there, whatever we, if we chose to do this, we could do it. And I guess my closing would be, our question, and that is, so if I hadn't brought this up, now that we have the traffic calming policy passed, what was going to happen in what timeframe?
It was probably going to be, I have to talk to Richard, who's away, but it'll probably be on the next agenda to kind of go through. We have all the pieces, I believe, in hand that the traffic calming policy calls to be analyzed, and I appreciate the fact that you believe signage would work. I don't know what knowledge that's based on, but the traffic committee and PVPC went through all of those things, and under the traffic calming policy, the board is supposed to take that information under advisement. And I don't believe that that really happened the last time we talked about this. And so that's why the traffic calming policy, as the framework for making this decision, is important. And that's why the consensus at the board last week was, let's get the policy done. And that's why Paul and Richard agreed to have it moved forward on the agenda tonight, without them being here, because I understood things need to move forward. And now we'll run, and now we'll run through Quintetuck Road, and it's a great, you know, when you do a policy, the best thing to have is something in hand, a low-hanging piece of fruit that you can go through right away to test it. And that's what we have with Quintetuck, we have everything in hand, and we can just go through it again.
Wait a second, I just want to, but what are we going to do? I mean, you know.
That's the decision the board, the decision that the recommendation traffic committee has to make. I mean, we're not going to go out in clear snow and put up signs without running through the traffic policy.
So that's, I guess that's.
So let's run through the traffic policy, we got an hour and a half.
Well, no, the point is, we're supposed to, my understanding of the traffic policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that now you are supposed to come back to us and make recommendations of what can be done now, and I would want to know with the snow. Now, I, my understanding is March 2nd, that you should have the report to us by March 2nd, and then this select board will make the vote on what we're going to do. And technically, the three of us could make a vote now, but I don't think we've got, unless we do, a consensus on what's to be done. Personally, I think the easiest thing is the very last one, when you've got road construction, you say, open only to local traffic. And you put one of those little wooden blocks on one side, and you put it on the other, and so you can pass that on to the traffic committee. That's my idea, and it's cheap, fast, and easy, and it's what we do whenever we're even just doing construction, because I personally am concerned about the safety issues. They, we realized there was a safety issue before by the volume of traffic, and when you start putting the snow on top of it, it's even more concerning. But my initial question was, what do, does everyone believe the policy's telling us on the next step?
No, I don't. The policy's. The policy's so broad that there's an ability to debate on a dozen potential different things.
I mean, to me, I don't think we have to redo, we've done everything in the, I mean, like, the application was made, it was studied, it was presented, we did discuss it, we voted on it, and now we're just further considering it. I don't think the policy should have to make us jump through more hoops. I mean, I actually like the two things that you guys are talking about in terms of the signage. You had two specific signs, Mark?
Yeah, it was, you know, I mean, if the concern is stated that it's traffic coming from Connecticut to East Long Meadow, you know, and then you, you know, rather than close the road, say, during certain hours, and we've got signs like this all through town, you can't turn right onto Quintetuck off of Frank Smith, and you can't turn left off of, onto Quintetuck off of Wolf Swamp. You know, those are the, you can't close Wolf, close Quintetuck Road, you've got to let the residents in and out, you know, and personally, I don't think that, you know...
What about this local traffic only?
Yeah, during...
I think it's a whole lot more difficult to enforce that. How do you determine who's local, you know, versus not? Because what, define local is, somebody said, well, I'm only going to the Big Path, that's local, that's Big Path's building, that's local. You know, locals, it doesn't say, now, if it said residents only, you could probably enforce that, but I'm not sure I'd want to do that.
I would encourage you to go back and look at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission report. It, all of these issues were analyzed in that context. And I appreciate, Mark, that you want to put out certain signs, but I would want to think that the, that the recommendations of the traffic experts would, would be something that the board would discuss as a full group on March 2nd.
And the problem is, Stephen, for me, that's now two more weeks or three more...
I understand it's a problem for you, but that's the direction the board is moving.
Fine. I just think we failed the residents of Quintetuck for quite a while under the guise of the politics of this board because, in my opinion, the traffic calming policy is nothing more than a bureaucratic delaying process.
But you were the one that was most concerned about precedent for the whole community, and the only way to avoid setting negative precedents is to have a policy that you can apply to the whole town, Mark.
We're not close the road.
The other thing is being able to do both, which is, we will make a decision on what the traffic calming policies will be March 2nd, and until then, we just put up a little notice saying, closed except for local residents.
You can't do that.
You can't put a...
And that's why...
It's a public road.
Go back to the PC report. Let's review it, let's talk about it again on March 2nd. We're not going to get anywhere tonight.
Here, Stephen, to Mark's, the signs that Mark's talking about, is that something that you have an opinion on?
About what the right signage is?
Well, he's, he's saying, I can't remember, no left turn on one thing, no right turn on the other.
I think restricting directional traffic is fine. It's something we do around the schools. I mean, it's an effective tool.
Right, right.
I mean, I think the thing is, and this is again...
So what's the downside of, and I'm generally asking, what's the downside of trying it now so that we don't have to wait for two weeks? Because these people are concerned about an immediate problem.
I mean, I do think that we have...
I'm echoing Mark's point about the timing of this.
I understand and sympathize with the folks from Quintetuck Road. I have been dealing with them longer than anybody else associated with the town.
Understood.
I'm the one who, in my desire to help them, brought this matter to the select board with what we thought was the best approach for the situation at hand. And I was the one who suggested we go to Pioneer Valley, or maybe it was, but I'm the one who initiated the conversation with Pioneer Valley to look at this further. At every stage of this, I have not compromised, but been willing to admit when I didn't get it right and try and find the best approach. I'm still doing that. And I generally don't think, first of all, and I don't know, if Mike says we can put signs out in the middle of winter and do them in an effective way, then maybe we can do that. But, I mean, you have to clear a lot of snow to do that, and like I said, you drive them into the ground, the ground is frozen solid. And you could put up a temporary sign, but the next time we have a snowstorm, it's going to get knocked over. And so what, the time, energy, resources, enforcement that goes into doing this temporary throw-up-the-sign thing doesn't really, at the end of the day, help very many people, and it caught, and it's an intense amount of investment. So what we said was, unfortunately, the winter time is here, there's not much we can do with the speed humps or other things, but I would rather have the board say clearly, here's the mitigation measure, here's the traffic calming measure we're going to apply, and as soon as it is practicable, town manager through the DPW implement it, and then we will do that. But to say, to make the decision on whether we can put signs up right now or not, still seems to be cart before the horse. It should be, let's, let's take, let's make a decision on the right thing for the town, for the road going forward, and for all residents of the town, and then as soon as you can put it, as soon as you can implement it, do it.
Mark, could you read the signs that you wanted to...
Yeah, going south on Frank Smith, that's from Maple toward Wolf Swamp Road, you have signs that say, no right turn onto Quintetuck with time periods, two hours in the morning, two hours in the evening.
Because that's, that's the...
That's the, that's where we're told the traffic is coming from.
Right.
And it's done to avoid the intersection of Frank Smith and Wolf Swamp. Similarly, coming from East Long Meadow toward Wolf Swamp School, a sign that says, no left turn onto Quintetuck those same hours, essentially forcing cars down to the intersection. People who live on Quintetuck and, I think it's Russell Road in there, would need to go, if they were coming from East Long Meadow, they'd need to go to the intersection, come down Frank Smith and turn into the other side of Quintetuck. So there is an inconvenience for residents too during those hours. They have to go the other way. I mean, this isn't just...
So wait a minute, you're saying that these two signs, restricting that either end, would be during the same hours?
Right. So here, pardon me, but here's, this is, this is Frank Smith, and this is Wolf Swamp, and here's Quintetuck, right? Yeah, right. So you can't turn this way, and you can't turn this way during those rush hours. If you want to get into Quintetuck, and you're coming...
In either rush, either rush.
Either rush hour. If you want to get to Quintetuck from this way, you've got to go here, or you've got to go here. So a resident who, for example, lives in Quintetuck, and between 7:00 and 9:00 is dropping their kids off at the high school, they can come out here, go to the high school, when they come back, they can go this way, but they, you know, they can, they can actually get in. But if they happen to be going East Long Meadow in the morning, they come back, they can't go this way, they're going to be inconvenienced as well. That's the price they're going to pay for...
They were willing to close the road, so they're comfortable with the...
Right, right.
All right. So, I mean, if you could read that off, I'd be prepared to make that motion in the interest, in the interest of getting something done on a temporary basis.
I don't know how you would, first of all, enforce that, number one. Number two is, where would those signs be that people would be educated enough to do it? I think it worked in the high school because you had the high school kids, I mean, the parents were informed of this. Where on earth are you going to put that with the snowbank so that people know, I can't make a right turn here? I've never heard of not being able to, unless you made it into a one-way street.
Can I go back a step? First of all, this is not an agenda item. And if I hurt discomfort with a K-9 unit without the full board, I can't believe that we'd want to make a decision on something that was far more epic for the board without the full board here, especially now we just adopted a policy and we're not going to give it a chance to work. I just don't see what the rush is to say, let's vote on signs, because the timeline is, for the sake of two weeks, it's not going to make that much of a difference.
I'll tell you why, Stephen, because I believe that we voted six weeks ago to do something, and nothing's been done. So this isn't a rush, this is a deferral.
I disagree with you on that, Mark.
I, I understand you do.
I don't think, I don't think the facts bear you out on that either.
Fine, I, I understand. I'll go read you the motion from the minutes that said we directed the town manager...
And I submitted a report after that that explained why that wasn't going to happen.
Again, this is not about who, it's roles and responsibilities. I suggest, it's about...
It's not about roles and responsibilities, Marie. It's about doing something for the citizens of the town who've been waiting now nine months to get some relief to traffic on their street, and now we get saying, and there's snow. Sorry, we can't do it because there's snow.
Okay. My recommendation is this, that we have a special, a special select board meeting in one week to deal with this issue only. Gives the time for the traffic committee, and it gives time for the residents to also give input, so we're not suddenly throwing something in there that you think is a good idea, and maybe we haven't vetted it completely, it's not going to work out as a good idea or the best idea. So instead of just doing something, let's do what's best for them right now and follow the policy so we don't really upset our other two board members. And your chair can post a meeting in three days or a week so that we get the traffic committee's input and we'll, we'll do it correctly.
Marie, I guess my concern is, we're just, you know, the letter says, under current conditions, this is an accident waiting to happen.
And that's why I think we should just say, closed except for local traffic.
And again, we're not...
We don't know that we can do that. And I certainly don't know how you can define local traffic.
According to this, we can.
Define local traffic.
Temporary street blockages.
Define local traffic.
Well, defined, anyway, it's...
I can define right-hand turn, I can define 7:00 AM, I can define 9:00 AM. I mean, it's very definitive. And how are you going to enforce it? We have a police force that enforces it. You know, and I go back to when we, when we turned the intersection of Shaker Road and Maple Road from a two-way stop sign to a four-way stop sign, we had, for, I think, a week, we had a police officer's car there. For the first few days, there was an officer in there stopping cars, and then the next few days, there was, so...
The issue is, I don't know what you're planning is the best thing. It's just some, some Mark's goals come...
And I'm not saying, and you're right. I don't know it's the best thing either, but after six months of not doing anything, what are we going to come up with in the next two weeks?
I'm not saying two weeks. I'm saying we could do it in three days or four weeks.
So what are we going to come up with in the next three days?
Let's say what the traffic committee's recommendation and what the Director of Public Work says they're able to do.
Fine, but Stephen, when you say a permanent solution, it needs to be done in the context of understanding, there's probably a majority of people on this board who don't want to include road closure.
That's fine. I, that was, honestly, the traffic, if the board had accepted the recommendation Traffic Committee, we wouldn't be having this discussion. There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an accident waiting to happen. So I call that out, Mark, because, and you led the charge because, because you knew that signs worked better than closing the road. And I guess, and I, this is an amazing reversal because the precedent was the big issue. We don't want everybody in here in town who feels like they have a volume or cut-through issue to come in and say, do this for us too. And now, I get that they're, that they can't see with the snowbanks and that it's an issue. Again, I was the first one that said, this really is a bigger issue than, than we think it is. The problem is, everyone with snowbanks on their streets are going to be back in here saying, we want the same thing. And you were the one who was most concerned about precedent. Now you're saying, just go do something because they're asking.
But let me, let me clarify it. My concern was the precedent of closing a road. It wasn't of doing traffic calming measures, of putting up signage, because we can go back, and I recall at those meetings, me saying, Stephen, in front of the high school, you did all that signage, you never talked to anybody in the select board, we didn't need to be involved and we shouldn't have been involved. You have the authority to put up signage, put up signage, and there is no precedent as far as I'm concerned with signage.
But that wasn't the recommendation, Mark. That was your idea, not the recommendation Traffic Committee.
But you're, but what you're saying to me now is, I did a reversal, and I'm telling you, I did not do a reversal. My concern about, wait a second. My concern about precedents was closure of the road. I want my road closed, I wanted a closed road, I want to go, no, they're not going to get that as a, but to say, I want you to do something and I want sign, that's no different from anybody else saying, I want sign.
It's unrealistic to, it's unrealistic to think that there's not going to be a precedent set by any action you guys take on Quintetuck.
Okay. Wait, let's say, let's go back to what's realistic right now. Realistic is that we can't do a vote on it because it's not on the agenda, because then it's a violation, because this was something that was in the packet. What we can do is, we can make a meeting within 72 hours if we feel this is really essential. It gives the traffic committee time to make recommendations. We will then hear from the DPW on what he feels he really can do in the way of temporary signs, so we see that they look like, we'll have a full plan of a, maybe it will be Mark's plan, but then we will do things in appropriate manner and we won't have people on the board, who's not on the board now, such as Richard, won't say that we just threw out a policy we just voted on. So I'm, I'm free the end of this week if we want to make a meeting in 72 hours or next Monday. I'm not sure when Richard and Paul will be back, but if we feel this is really essential to the safety, let's just book the meeting to the end of this week and not wait for the other two to come back, because I'm fine with that. But I am a little uncomfortable about making a vote when it didn't make the agenda. I thought it was going to make the agenda.
Fine. And I agree with, we need, we ought not vote probably tight. What I want to do is, Stephen, when, how soon could the traffic committee be prepared to make a recommendation to the select board?
All the stuff, you have all the recommenda, you have the recommendation, you've got the PVPC report, the board can simply get together, look at that again, say, in the context of the traffic committee, in the context of the information we already have in front of us, we want to do this. And again, as soon as it's practicable, go do this. And if it's practicable to do it, just because you say, put the signs up, doesn't mean it's physically practicable, Mark.
I, I hear you, but what you also said...
But you keep saying the same thing over and over, and you don't hear me.
No, I hear you, but because what you just said to me, though, is that there's no different recommendation, there's no additional, we already have all the information we're going to have, we already have all the recommendations we're going to have.
We have all the stuff we need. If the board wants additional information, recommendations, it'll take us a little bit of time, but we can put something else together.
So what we need is just a vote by the board.
Well, what I want is the further information on what we can do with the snow situation because we're asking, can something temporarily be done during the snow situation for traffic calming? Because obviously, may, a stop sign, speed humps, all of this might be possible when the weather's good, but we're asking, what can be done during the snow emergency in order of...
Well, we'll discuss it and send something to the board via email next couple of days.
So when is the earliest we can have a meeting, Mark? Legally.
We could have a meeting Friday.
Is it Friday?
Because we can't post it until Tuesday morning, so, Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. So is Friday legal?
Yeah, it's 48 hours.
Okay.
I'm not sure we want to meet Friday, but...
Well, it's Friday or Monday.
I mean, I mean, my view is, if you read that motion, I'll second it, I'll vote for it.
But the problem is, that's violation of open meeting law.
See, I mean, it's in the correspondence.
It's not in the agenda.
I mean, the agenda includes the correspondence.
I'll let you challenge it as a violation of open meeting law because we were talking, the agenda did say, we were talking about traffic calming measures, the traffic calming policy.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, my, my question is, and my only concern is, and we've got Mike Grable here, and so we can put him on the spot and say, what can we, you know, because just like the last time, we said, put up speed humps, it physically can't be done. And I think, Alex, you've acknowledged that we physically can't do that this time of year, put in speed humps. You know, the question is, physically, can we put up signage?
I hear that question, Mark. And again, I'm going back to the fact, you just adopted a traffic calming policy to handle issues like this.
Right.
And the first thing you're going to do is ignore it.
No, we're not ignoring it. I think we're following it. If you look at what the traffic calming policy says, it says, we will take the recommendation of the traffic committee, and you just, I just asked you, is there any additional information? You said, we've already got all the information we're going to have.
But I feel like, it just doesn't feel like the board is making this decision in the context of the process set forth in the traffic calming policy.
So, from a, let's have a rational discussion. What should we be doing differently in the context of the traffic calming, traffic calming policy?
Asking the traffic committee to go back, look at everything, make any recommendations that can be done in the current conditions out there, and have a meeting on Friday afternoon or Friday morning, when we can meet, and have a report from DPW on what can be put in the way of signage, because obviously, this board's moving towards signage. By just doing this, then, you won't be totally insulting the policy, and you will be making some sort of attempt of following it while two-day or a 48-hour delay, you know, I don't think is going to, it still means that we are seriously taking their considerations.
I mean, you're going to be some recitation of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission report that addresses, you list a range of options, of things you can do. Shouldn't there be some discussion about why one or some, none of those options work when you make the official decision?
Yeah. Yeah, and well, of course, it is temporary, because we're talking about the current snow conditions. We will be revisiting this when the, the ground is thawed. So I think it's a two-step process, but we still, I think, should be following the procedures by a separate meeting and a separate report from the Traffic Committee, because we're now asking you a different question, and that is, in the current conditions there, what is the best traffic calming policy? That's, so I think it's a little different.
To me, the only question I need to have answered is, and Mike could just say it, can you put up a temporary sign with the snow?
Very difficult to drive anything into the ground at this time of year, obviously. Anything that you would put, you could take a barrel with concrete or something and use it as a base, but now you're, you're putting something at the edge of the road that's not normal there, that could be hit by a car. That's the only, and that's the only way that I can think of, is you're going to put a sign, a temporary sign up, and you should have the temporary sign, and before that, you should have a new warning sign, saying there's a temporary sign up ahead. So you're, at, at both ends, you're going to have two temporary signs, and the only way I can envision doing it now is to put something like a barrel, a heavy-weighted barrel, even if it's just got sand in it, if it's, if it's another object at the side of the road.
Surrounded by three feet of snow or more.
Well, you would have a barrel, but if it was a standard, a standard barrel that's four feet tall, and it's three-quarters full of sand, it's pretty much an immovable object, unlike you would see a traffic barrier...
But I'm saying the visibility of it. I mean, we're not going to clear the snow on the side of the road, all the way down Frank Smith Road. You're going to clear a spot where the barrel's going to go.
Right.
It's not that we don't want to do it.
I don't know, that doesn't sound impracticable. To me, the...
It's, it's really not.
I mean, to, to me, this whole, no, no, I guess I thought, I didn't, I said it did not seem impracticable. I mean, maybe, but in any event, to me, all of this is experimentation. The temporary blockage was an expen, and what I see that, say that is, because you don't know what the effect is of a particular measure is going to be on that road at that time. So nobody, there is no permanent solution, we're going to vote, it's going to be a permanent solution once we try it and we see that it works. So, again, if you want, if you make that motion, Mark, I'll, I'll second it and vote on it. I, I don't think there's a need to meet again on Friday to do the same thing.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we ask, that we install signs. South on Frank Smith, no right turn, 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 4:00 to 6:00 PM into Quintetuck Road, and moving west on Wolf Swamp Road, no left turn onto Quintetuck Road, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Put those up as best, as practical, given the weather, and see what the effect is on it, and review that in due course.
Second.
And I'll be abstaining, because I think it's a legal vote, and I think it's not doing a full analysis of what our options are.
And, and I guess my only comment would be, I would be open to revisiting this even as soon as the next meeting, if, if, you know, we have more information, or if other board members feel differently. I just think it, something like this is something that's doable, and I think we owe it to, to do something that the residents are saying is a safety hazard.
Anything else, Marie?
No.
I'm going to call for a vote, then. And all those in favor of the motion? Aye. All those opposed, and abstentions?
Aye, abstain.
Okay, Marie abstained, so the vote, it passes two to zero to one. So the vote is for the town to install as quickly as practical temporary signs to restrict some of the traffic in rush hour Quintetuck Drive.
You'll send the language of the signs?
I would be glad to.
And it's just, we don't have these, we have them made, so...
Right, right.